Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st, 2011 meeting of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Edina City Council. And also, welcome to a better sun angle and longer days. So it's a good thing to have a nice sunny day like today. Roll call, please, Jane.
Member Brenda?
Here.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. For those of you in the audience, if you had an opportunity to pick up an agenda, you will notice that there are certain items on the agenda marked with an asterisk. Those are items that are handled on a single motion basis as part of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Seventieth Street Traffic Cabinets.
Which one is that?
Two C.
Two C, there we go. All right, anything other than two C? Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved and second, we approve the balance of the consent agenda, other than two C, which has been removed. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, we have no Housing and Redevelopment Authority business this evening. We do have a proclamation that we're going to read and adopt as a council. It is the Earth Hour proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas all people and cultures are dependent on a healthy environment for a safe and fulfilling life, and whereas the burning of fossil fuels to produce energy is one of the major contributors to rising temperatures and levels of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, causing rapid climate change in Minnesota and around our planet, and whereas electric lights account for a great deal of energy use, and whereas Earth Hour started in 2007 in Sydney, Australia, over 2.2 million individuals and more than 2,000 businesses turned off their lights for one hour to take a stand against climate change. Earth Hour, organized by WWF, has become a global sustainability movement with more than 50 million people across 35 countries participating. Now, therefore, James B. Hovland, Mayor of the City of Edina, to hereby proclaim 8:30 to 9:30 p.m., Saturday, March 26, 2011, as Earth Hour in Edina. The Edina City Council asks that all the residents, schools, churches, and businesses in Edina turn off their lights where safe for the designated hour and to appreciate the gift of a life-supporting environment. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved, second.
All right, moved and second, we adopt the proclamation. Discussion, all those in favor of adopting the Earth Hour in Edina proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. I see some folks from our Energy and Environment Commission that have come in, Paul Thompson, Bob Gubrud. Paul, do you want to come up and accept the proclamation and then comment briefly on some of the activities of the Energy and Environment Commission, and maybe just quickly on your trip to Cancun?
Trip to Cancun, what does that have to do with Earth Hour? Actually, I wanted to just say that today is March 1st, and it kind of came in like a lamb and is going out like a lion within one day. So we can expect below-zero temperatures tonight and heavy winds. And I think it's an indication of Mother Earth kind of talking back to us, and we are beginning to listen. Earth Hour is a wonderful way and a simple way of really reaching your family, and just turning off your lights, lighting a candle, reading a poem, telling a story. And, you know, I'd like to introduce my members, Alma from the high school, stand up, Bob Gubrud, who's the co-chair of Education and Outreach, John Howard, who is with me almost every day now, a former Edina student and now a St. Olive graduate, and our new member, Laura, is she here? She had a coughing fit, I think, she went out. But our group is really growing, and we want to encourage all of you to find out how we can work together, you know, just to cool things off, both in the way we talk to people, in the bridges that we build amongst people of different ways of thinking, because the only way we're going to deal with the climate crisis is to improve our relationships. So I've been proud to represent Edina and Minnesota, both in Copenhagen and Cancun. We're making plans now to go to Durban, South Africa next year. So we want to continue to urge our politicians to do the right thing and to work together to make these kinds of things an everyday activity. So thank you to the council and mayor and the staff. It's a pleasure to work with all of you.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
All right. Next matter is award of bid, change orders, item two C, which Mr. Sprague, Member Sprague, you pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, just looking for a little bit of clarification from staff as to what the items are for and how it relates to the upcoming project.
Yep. Councilmember Sprague and council, what you have before you tonight is two traffic control cabinets. And what these cabinets are is they run, basically house all the control items that run the signals at West Shore Drive and Cornelia Drive. The cabinets themselves will be, the one at West Shore Drive will be positioned on the northeast corner, adjacent to the vacant lot at Seventieth and West Shore. And then the existing cabinet, which is, I believe, is on the southwest corner at Cornelia and Seventieth, will remain in the same location. And they will all be painted bronze color. That was a question that the neighborhood had a few weeks ago that responded back to, is that all the lights, the traffic signals and such will be painted bronze, with the exception at Trunk Highway 100, which is a Mindot-owned traffic signal, that they have the traditional, the yellow and silver.
Does that include the pedestrian light at Wooddale?
That's correct, yes.
Want to move this matter, Mr. Sprague?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded that we adopt the traffic signal cabinet matter for West Seventieth Street Improvement, TS 44. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Well, this is in substantial part a transportation night at the Edina City Council. We had a work session this evening with our Edina Transportation Commission, and we have some folks here with us this evening that are going to give us some enlightenment on a variety of different projects that are going on, and some work that's been done on the commuting front from our own 494 commuter services that we are a member of. And the first person that we have with us this evening is John Griffith from Mindot, who's going to give us an update on the 169-494 reconstruction project. John, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, my name is John Griffith. I'm the West Area Manager for Mindot, and gonna give you a brief update on the 169-494 project that is currently under construction, although it hasn't seen a lot of dirt moved. You will start to see a lot of that happening this spring and summer. Part of the project, we have a lot of partners in this project. The City of Edina is one, Eden Prairie and Bloomington are also stakeholders as part of the, you know, the direct impacts or involvement with those communities. Hennepin County, FHWA, and certainly neighbors to the south of the river are very interested in getting rid of the signals at this interchange. Going to go quickly through kind of a overall timeline in terms of kind of the history of the corridor, the interchange's design, kind of the design-build process in terms of, it's not our traditional design-bid-build, some project information, and the contractor's schedule in terms of what they're doing and kind of their attack on terms, in terms of trying to get the project done in the next two years. Most of you know that Trunk Highway 169 used to be County Road 18. In the early 90s, Mindot took that roadway over from Hennepin County. The current interchange with 494-169 was built in the late 90s. Since that time, we've progressively done work at the River Bridge, Old Chocopey Road, Pioneer Trail, Anderson Lakes Parkway, and obviously, as we get up closer to 494, there's still work to be done. As part of the attempt of trying to get this project underway, it wasn't in our 20-year plan. We obviously recognized that it was a very important project to the region. Funding didn't allow us to advance that project. There's several attempts in terms of trying to get stimulus money. Mayor Hovland was very instrumental in trying to persuade the Met Council in terms of an agreement that Mindot had with the Crosstown project. The stars aligned, and we found funding. The rest of it is kind of the timeline in terms of going through that letting, going through that short list of the design-build contractors, and kind of that contract award, and then the completion in November of 2012. One of the big, I wouldn't say a hurdle, but in terms of our partners, FHWA with a traditional interchange, is that they want all the system moves as part of that interchange. With this particular project, in terms of trying to find the funding, we were also looking at ways of trying to save money. And what we've done with this interchange is to, new direction maybe in terms of, we're always looking at trying to do the right things, but in terms of this project is to create a statement in terms of, we don't have all the money in the world to make things perfect, but in this case, could we do a performance-based design where two of those system moves, which required big flyover ramps, a lot of bridge structure, didn't have the volumes that would justify that kind of expenditure. The lines in orange represent the flyover bridge. Actually, the, as we got further into the design, the one that kind of skirts the City of Edina is a bridge that we're actually putting in. It was more cost-effective to put that bridge in now rather than doing the retaining walls and some of the other temporary work and then come back later with a structure. So that particular structure did get put in as part of our design. One of the reasons why we felt those two movements weren't needed at this time and based on our traffic numbers is that currently, the traffic that's coming from 212 or south on 494 to access the Golden Triangle or further areas further to the east, they would take Trunk Highway 62, or they'd come up Highway 212. If they're coming from Prairie Center Drive or down in the Eden Prairie Mall area, they have an opportunity to come up 2212 and then proceed on 212 up to 169 and 62. If people were interested in getting to the Golden Triangle, is that they could continue to go east on 494 and I'll show, maybe it's, I'll get into those movements in terms of a better picture and stuff. But as part of that, we did do the analysis, and we did come up with an agreement with FHWA to have performance measures. So as we move forward, if we do see some problems with certain movements, is that we have a commitment to them to put those flyover bridges in. But it's based on performance rather than, we think that that's a practice that we should have as part of our design. This gives you a side-by-side what's out there currently with a cloverleaf design, a two-level type facility, and with the future is that we're actually going up three levels, 494 being at the lowest level, 169 being at that mid-level, and then we have the flyover bridge that handles those high-volume movements and a flyover bridge as a third level. Gives you a little bit better perspective, Edina, City of Edina is over here, Viking Facility is where I'm circling, Friendship Village, a retirement community down in the lower right-hand corner. One of the things that you're going to see in this design is a lot of roundabouts. We get a lot of questions on why so many? We haven't seen this in the metro area, and all of a sudden, instead of one to get used to, we have six. I don't know if the green, the people in terms of the Earth Day, one of the things that we do as part of our intersection control analysis is determine what is a proper, what is the proper application in terms of, should that be a signal? Should that be a stop control? One of the tools in our toolbox is a roundabout, and what a roundabout does is, it creates a situation where a car doesn't have to stop. Most of the areas that you see roundabouts in, we could put a stop sign in there, but that causes all the traffic to stop. If there's nobody there, we want to keep those cars moving. It's more efficient, it saves on gas. There's a number of studies that show keeping that traffic moving certainly helps the environment in terms of the greenhouse gases that cars emit. Click there. There we go. Mentioned before, as part of this project is a design-bid-build. We do, we did produce a layout as part of the process, is that we brought that layout to the city councils back in 2007, and that layout is the basis in which we have a design-build contractor bid on our project. The right-of-way is identified as part of that layout, the capacity or the number of lanes, but what design-build does, it's designing as it's building. So elements that they can move forward with, for instance, the bridge structures, is that they can start designing those, start building them, and then they can start doing some of the other roadway designs. So it's more of a parallel process versus more of a beginning-to-end, once the design is complete and then you go into construction. It's doing those things simultaneously. It's more efficient in terms of the amount of time that it takes, plus it allows some innovation to the contractor. Contractors know the business very well in terms of building bridges, building retaining walls. So some of that in terms of their methods is that they could potentially see some cost savings that's reflected in their bids. We did receive some really good bids as part of this project. That's reflective of that design-build process versus the completed design and then a contract bidding on that design. We did have three contractors bid, or three joint ventures bid on the project, Ames-Lunda, McCrossan-Cramer, and then Walsh Companies or Construction. As part of that process, we do a technical evaluation, and then a, once that technical evaluation is done, is that we open up the bids in terms of what they feel that it would cost them to do that. So those technical scores are weighted against what those cost proposals were, and the winning team was the McCrossan-Cramer team. You can see the bid that they did have is a little over $125 million. Again, I mentioned the layout. This layout, as part of the process, was presented to the city councils. We have a number of roundabouts as part of that design. You'll see a number of ponding areas that are suggested with design-build, is that those ponds may or may not be a part of the design depending on the storm sewer structures that the design will take into account. The bridges, going to go through this fairly quickly. Number of utilities that had to be relocated, actually was pretty extensive. I believe it was over $10 million worth of utility relocations as part of this project. I believe it was US West or Quest Communications. Very large utility that's located along 494 that had to get relocated. We have done some outreach. This is one of the outreach things that we've done. We've done a number of other ones in terms of going to city councils and a number of other presentations. Visual quality, putting together the artist's renderings of before and after. I do have a quick modeling or a video that I want to show in terms of what the corridor would look like, an animation of what the corridor will look like once we're completed. Some of the other pieces of the design effort. Again, some of the other things that we've been doing as part of this process. Certainly, a lot of stakeholder involvement, a number of open houses that we had held prior to the design-build contractor being selected. The schedule that we're currently on, some of that work has already begun, setting up the bypasses that are going to be needed as part of the bridge staging, building those bridges and retaining walls. It mentions January of 2011, they have not begun that work yet. That should start in earnest here in mid-March. Recognizing that they do have some wiggle room in terms of that completion date that they've, they guarantee us is that November of 2012, so even a couple months of sliding here, they can make that time up. The idea is to get all the traffic switched over to southbound so they can reconstruct the northbound segments of 169. Once that work is completed, is they flip them back over to the completed southbound and they, or, excuse me, on the northbound, and then they complete the work on the southbound. At the end of this year, those signals will be removed. The pavement in terms of 169 and those connections to allow people to get across 169 will be made. The commitment there is that those signals right now provide access across 169. With the completion of the work in 2011, is that those people will be able to go underneath and won't need the signals to get through traffic on 169. Frontage road work and the flyover ramps in terms of those last connections, and then again, the project completed in 2012, end of 2012. There is, as part of the design-build contractor, we do have a communications firm, R, W, no, R.
RA.
R-A. Susan Youngs is here tonight to help answer any questions that might come up, but we do have a lot of resources in terms of when we do get complaints. There is a website that's created. People can sign up to be a contact, so any news releases or any information that's related to the project would be sent via email to those people so they can get direct communications to them if they sign up. There is telephone number, and they also have a project office that we can have walk-up communication as well. Some of the things that we've been able to do with the animation is to give a more realistic picture of what the interchange is going to look like in terms of a 3D model. This is just a 360-degree view of that, with a new bridge here at Washington Avenue. You can see the flyover bridges as part of the work, but it stays pretty much in confines of what is there today. There was some right-of-way acquisitions, but for the most part, it's maintained within that confines of the existing interchange. One other video I wanted to show, we have a number of other ones that we've put together, but this will give you a sense for, as you were, if you were going to be traveling west on 494, I give you a view of what those flyover bridges will look like, what the corridor will look like once we're done. Obviously, I don't know if 494 ever looked like that with no traffic on it. But there, you would enter the flyover bridge to take you southbound on 169. You would no longer go through that cloverleaf or to go up to that signal. That would be a flyover bridge that you're going to be going under here shortly. You could see off to the right, the flyover bridge that would take you north on 169. Existing 169 bridges over 494, and then as you're approaching the Vikings Facility, a new bridge that isn't there today at Washington Avenue. With that, I am going to take any questions.
John, can you go back to the beginning of this video where it's freeze-framed and show folks quickly how you'd make those eastbound 494 to northbound 169 and southbound 169 to westbound 494 moves? There, that would be great.
One more time on those.
All right, so eastbound 494 to, let's do southbound 169 to westbound 494. That's a pretty simple move, pretty close to what they do now.
Eastbound to southbound?
No, southbound 169 to westbound 494.
Okay.
That's not a flyover anymore. You've got to go through a few roundabouts.
Right. Yep, you can't see it where my cursor is, but there is a ramp that would take you and exit you off of 169. You would come up to a roundabout, go halfway around that roundabout, and then back onto a ramp that would take you to...
494.
To westbound 494. Not much different than it is today. Today, you have to come up to a signal, and usually that backup is past Valley View Road, and you're waiting for your turn to get up there. With the relief of getting rid of those signals, is that that's going to be a much quicker route than you have today, although you do have to exit 169 to make that move and come up to a roundabout. Really, time-wise, really, we're not taking you too much further out of your way. The more, I wouldn't say challenging, but in terms of the expectation of a driver, if you're coming east on 494, right at this, right at the edge of the photo is a ramp that you would take, exit, you would exit 494, come up, and then you would go over the Washington Avenue Bridge, head north on Washington Avenue, go up to Valley View, and then get back on at Valley View and head on north. Recognizing that a majority of those people that take this, their trip ends at Valley View. And today, they can't get across at this location. Washington Avenue is not a bridge that is there today. With this project, you don't necessarily have to go all the way up to Valley View if your business is further south of Valley View, is that you can take Washington Avenue. So again, majority of those trips that want to go north of Valley View is that 212 or Trunk Highway 62 would be probably a shorter route in terms of those people trying to get north of Valley View, because then the next access really is Trunk Highway 62.
I'm just trying to have you show, Member Brenda, how she can get home here, because she lives right by Braemar, so I think we got her.
Yep, and all the other moves are identical. There's obviously a ramp to go north. Seventy-Eighth Street today, there is that frontage road that continues on up past Braemar. We don't have that slip ramp or that connection to 169 like there is today. If you are interested in coming across and going west on 494, is that you would come up to this roundabout, go underneath, go up to another roundabout, or actually, three-quarter of the way around the roundabout, and then get on that ramp. So you still have access. It's not maybe as neat as it was with the signals, but from a time perspective, it's probably going to be about the same amount of time.
Let's make a couple other things clear for folks, I think, and that is that you save $40 million by not putting in those two movements that we just talked about on a flyover basis.
Right.
Is that right?
Yep.
And you were the first, Mindot is the first state transportation organization, I think, in the country to be able to convince Federal Highway to do a performance-based design, and the design allows for the construction of those other two legs should they be needed in the future.
Right, right. The complimentary move or the other flyover would be similar to the one that goes over these two bridges here, but it would be in the opposite direction. And we do build the bridge abutments, and one of the things, when I mentioned that this bridge here was put in as part of our design, is that by the time that you do a temporary connect, is that we're spending almost up to the same amount as it would be to do that bridge. So we actually are providing for those bridges to come in. Obviously, you've got to have the construction do, there's construction impacts, but from the stuff that we're putting in, we're not going to have to rip it back out and replace some of the infrastructure that's already there. We're accommodating that to happen in the future, again, based on the performance of that traffic that is intended to use that on the local road system or on Trunk Highway 212.
Right. So really quite an interesting interchange in the sense that it serves the three local communities of Edina, Bloomington, and Eden Prairie, serves the region, but it also has interregional implications. If you ask people in Mankato, what's their most significant traffic problem, they'll tell you 169-494. And so I think this is quite a great project for all of those reasons, the local, the regional, and interregional implications for it, to be able to move people and goods in a faster and more efficient way, and a much safer way.
The drivers-at-class, when they want to teach roundabout training, they'll come down here, because there's quite a few of them. But again, recognizing that if we didn't have those roundabouts, they would be stop signs and we'd probably have more backup. This is creating a free flow, and the spacing and stuff with those roundabouts is certainly a applicable design, although we haven't had quite as many in any other location. The use and application of roundabouts is the right choice in terms of those traffic applications.
Good. Other questions for John? Member Brenda?
I live very close to this area, just a bit, just a bit north of this is the Valley View Road interchange with 169. And the, on the very first drawing that I saw of this, I think it was an open house at Braemar Golf Course, it showed that intersection as being part of this project. And how far is that being delayed? It is not currently part of this project. How far is it being delayed? How far is it being delayed?
As part of the project, in looking at the traffic modeling that is associated with the project and updating that from the 2005, 2006 work, is that we updated those numbers, and there was a disagreement between MINDOT and the parties in terms of what was the traffic number showing. And the traffic numbers were showing not as much impact to Valley View, or very little impact. And as part of our design is that we were doing improvements up there to a lesser extent than what you were seeing in terms of those roundabouts. And as part of the decision-making process, we didn't want that decision to stop the work that was being done here, is that we have an agreement with the city of Edina and Eden Prairie, is that we want to move forward with this project and then to monitor and to determine what are the traffic impacts to Valley View and to commit to doing something when the traffic and the analysis warrants a project there. We were disagreeing, and again, there is an agreement that we will continue to monitor that, similar to the other performance measures, is that we disagreed in terms of what was predicted to happen there, recognizing that our predictions were different in terms of our outcomes.
The other, I just have a comment, and that is to thank you at MINDOT for your communication on this project. I've signed up for all the bulletins and then send it out to the neighborhood and know a number of people who work in the Golden Triangle area, so as there are road closings and things, they know that they can sign up for those, or I just fire them out there and say Viking Drive's going to be closed this weekend, or whatever. And so I appreciate the effort, and I know they do, too.
Great.
Thanks.
Members Sprig?
Thanks, Mayor. Question about, is there a landscape plan for the roundabouts that MINDOT's come up with, and has that been a community design, you know, in conjunction with the community, or is that just something that MINDOT came up with?
As part of the construction project is that the construction project goes until 2012. MINDOT does have a landscaping project program, so we have set money aside. It's a separate contract. What we want to have happen is the contractor do all their work. They have turf establishment, meaning that they'll either, you know, plant seed or sod or wherever it's appropriate, but they're not planting trees and doing some of those other things. That landscaping project will happen with community involvement, so as you look at the roundabouts, what type of vegetation is going to be in there, some of the other areas that have the ability to support landscaping, there'll be opportunities to do that with that landscape project.
And then, the animations that you showed, are those available on the Metro Projects 169 website?
I believe they are, yeah. Yep. And again, we have a few more that show, actually, one that brings you down to the street level and takes you through the roundabouts, has you go over the Washington Avenue Bridge and then back around. I didn't show that just because of the amount of time that it takes.
And then, just to follow up on the Valley View conditions, Engineer Hul, can you describe just briefly what the traffic issues were at that intersection that are not being solved this round?
Yeah, when we originally looked at this, probably five, six years ago or so, when we first had the first design, where the roundabout site that Councilmember Brindle referred to, there was the congestion level, basically. I believe the Washington and Valley View was like a E or F level, and it was, in between there was a much worse, and it got a little bit better as it went further east. When they re-looked at the numbers, we felt that the numbers were a little bit shy, but it could have been because of the economy and the drop in travel. And so, for the two cities, that we said, well, if we look back at this in a few years, are the numbers going to be higher? And so that's why we didn't want them to just do a little bit of work and then say, we're done with that intersection. We wanted them to come back to the table and look at this with us in five years. So it's still going to be potentially congested there for the next few years, but then, once again, like Mr. Griffith said, is that you don't, today you do not have that southerly access that you're going to have with this. So that might balance it out also.
And assuming there would be a problem in the future, is the main solution, are we, bridge capacity, is it signalization? What are the solutions?
All of the above. It's a bridge capacity, it's the signals, or roundabouts, it's, yes, it's basically all those. The bridge, actually, if you were to put in a, upgrade the signal system, you'd need more width on the bridge, and the bridge would have to basically be reconstructed. If you were to put the roundabouts in with the old design, you just did little minor tweaks on the bridge and kept the bridge itself. And it goes back to the philosophy of what's the rest of 169 going to look like in the future to the north, too. So I think it really gives us a good opportunity to complete this project, sit back, look at what the future needs are. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? John, thanks for coming over and visiting with us, and I think our community members will really appreciate being able to access this information on our website and take a look at it when they so desire, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers?
Next, we've got Dave Christensen from MINDOT, who's going to make a freight rail presentation. It's an issue that's been of interest to folks in our community in recent months. And Dave met with our engineering staff and me and the city manager a few months ago now, and then made a presentation. We asked him to make a presentation to the Edina Transportation Commission, which he did a few weeks ago, I think. And then you're back here to make one at the city council level. We wanted to get it recorded so our citizens could look at this presentation as well. So Dave, thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Hovland, councilmembers, staff, and citizens, thanks for inviting me back again. I'll try to give a quick 10-minute overview of the hour-and-a-half presentation I gave to the Transportation Commission, shorten it up a little bit. We went into a lot of detail, everything from the economics of ethanol production to farm and barging and everything else, but we'll hit the high points. Minnesota is, has a very important freight rail segment as part of the state's transportation system. We have four Class I railroads, all four of them transcontinental railroads, 16 short lines. We haul 230 million tons of freight per day into, out of, and through the state of Minnesota, and that is places number 13 in the country. Despite being a low-population state, we're very much dependent on freight rail in this state. Thirty-eight percent of all the tonnage that moves in the state moves by rail against the national average of 12%. Some of the trends that we described to the Transportation Commission, we're looking at overall freight volumes to be up by 2030, 15% to 25% over what they are today as a state average. And that's reflecting the fact that back in 2007, the freight railroads in Minnesota and the country hit their highest all-time level of freight movement that they've ever had in their 150 years of existence. We're looking at a new high-speed passenger rail initiative that's being pushed by the federal government and with the support of the states, and especially the Midwest region, the Chicago hub. It's a new national priority. There's already been $10 billion awarded to various projects to move this ahead in various regions, and it's evolving as we speak. We're actually looking now, just within the last two weeks, of a new vision for 2050 at the national level of true high-speed, European-style or Japanese-style trains between population centers of 2 million or more. We also recognize that a lot of the parts of our transportation system, including the rail network, are going to be at capacity now and worse by 2030. We also looked at the fact that the Minnesota State Rail Plan, which was adopted just last year, designates a twin-cities-centered regional passenger rail network, moving 90 to 110 miles per hour between some of the regional trade centers, as well as connecting to the rest of the country, particularly Chicago. Mankato to Twin Cities is a Phase 1. That means it's recommended to be built out by 2030 in this high-speed rail network for the state. If you look at the lines on the map here, this is what the state rail plan recommends. Of course, the first priority in the highest-volume ridership is Chicago to the Twin Cities. That's expected to be the highest-volume corridor in the entire Midwest, higher than Chicago to St. Louis. Three to four million passengers a year traveling at 110 miles per hour, and a route that's expected to be profitable, actually spin-off surplus cash from the fare box. The other heavy blue lines are the regional network. You'll note on there again, Mankato, which is, as we'll see in a minute, affects Edina, as well as other areas around the state. The light blue lines are the 2050 Amtrak vision for the country, where there's further build-out of intercity lines. One of the things about the Twin Cities is that we are kind of unique in how we're set out. If you look at this rail map, you can see there are two blue squares on there, two downtown stations. We have the old St. Paul Union Depot, which is being refurbished right now and will be the home of Amtrak in 2012, also the home of both intercity bus lines, Jefferson and Greyhound lines, Metro Transit, and also Central Corridor Light Rail. We have a second downtown station, the North Star Station at Twin Stadium in downtown Minneapolis, which is expected to be another major regional hub, and of course, the larger the two downtowns. If you look on the far-left-hand side of the map, you see a red line running north and south. That's Canadian Pacific, also known as Minneapolis, Northfield, and Southern, the old Dan Patch Line, which we'll be talking about in a minute, which runs right through the middle of Edina on the north-south route. Some of the rail project initiatives that are moving on that affect the city here, Southwest Light Rail Transit. It'll be the first, the third light rail transit project in Twin Cities, has the prospect of being very viable, very, very high usership. It will be the first true suburban light rail line and has the highest potential so far of having bidirectional trips to work, both coming out of Minneapolis, going to Hopkins, Golden Triangle, and Eden Prairie, as well as coming up from southwest suburbs into downtown Minneapolis and connecting to the other light rail lines. One of the projects we're looking at right now is the St. Louis Park Freight Rail Interchange. Very controversial subject right now, but it is in the stage of being the EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet, where we are doing simple fact-finding. We have a citizens advisory board up there, which is helping us bring up issues, and then that will be a first step in an EIS, but that does not determine what decision will be made as to where freight moves around there. One of the reasons for this interchange is that, right now, Twin Cities and Western runs from the western Minnesota border with the Dakotas all the way into Minneapolis, but goes through the Kennelworth Corridor, which is the future route of Southwest LRT. There is some question as to whether or not freight rail and LRT will all fit in that corridor, so we're looking for alternatives. Of course, I talked about a high-speed rail system from Mankato to Minneapolis, and then the Transportation Commission have bike trail and LRT proposals, separate from Southwest LRT, to use this north-south line for Edina Transportation to connect down to Savage. If you look at the regional rail map, you can see, again, the red line running close to the center this time. It reaches all the way down to Northfield, through Lakeville and Burnsville up to Savage, it crosses the Minnesota rivers at Savage on an old swing bridge, and then up through Edina and St. Louis Park, and then into north Minneapolis. That is the line we'll be concentrating on as far as its impact on Edina. That is the old Dan Patch Line, like I said. It was built in 1908, almost the last rail line built in the Twin Cities. It was built as a lightweight, interurban design, that is, a suburban trolley system. It was actually built by the owners of the Dan Patch Farm, the horse farm down in Northfield, in order to get transportation from Minneapolis down to the farm for people who wanted to see Dan Patch run harness racing. It's today owned by the Canadian Pacific, and it connects Northfield to north Minneapolis, a Canadian Pacific Shoreum Yard, which sits right astride their transcontinental line. It also connects with Progressive Rail, Twin Cities and Western, Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, Union Pacific, and Hennepin County's rail line, very strategic. The Savage Swing Bridge, unlike the rest of the line, which is owned by Canadian Pacific, is owned by the TCNW. They bought it about 10 years ago for a dollar, but it's still in use. Few current uses today are two trains per day on the Canadian Pacific, running up and down that line, switching mainly with rail-oriented businesses down in Bloomington on the Progressive Rail. Runs normally about 8 o'clock in the morning and 3 o'clock in the afternoon. A possible interchange with the TCNW in St. Louis Park, as opposed to going through Kennelworth Corridor right now, would add about four trains per day onto the line north of the interchange, up to Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, about a one-and-a-half-mile distance. We talked about high-speed intercity trains. The projection for that in the state rail plan is about two to four round trips, or four to eight trains per day coming out of Mankato, carrying about 250,000 passengers per day. If you think back to that rail map, first priority is Chicago to the Twin Cities, second priority is Rochester and Duluth. Mankato is almost the last priority, just before Fargo would be connected. And we're talking about a four-to-six-billion-dollar plan, so we're basically facing a lot of budget constraints as well. And then, of course, we could always have additional freight increase, because it is a private railroad line that changes according to market forces and what shippers are on the line. But we don't see any potential major increases in the near future. Challenges to expanding this line and traffic through Edina is, at first, the Savage Swing Bridge. It's across a navigable river on the Minnesota River. It is in very poor condition, and the replacement would have to be an Army Corps of Engineer and Coast Guard-approved lift bridge costing about $30 to $40 million. For a line that currently crosses a river about twice a month, it's not a good cost-benefit, but it is something that could be used in the future if needed. Again, track condition on this entire line is what we know technically as FRE Class 1, which means it has a top speed based on the condition of the track of no more than 10 miles per hour. Again, the grades and curves in this line, because of the way it was constructed back when it was first laid out, and remember that Edina, St. Louis Park, even Bloomington were founded back in 1860s and plotted shortly after that. When the Dan Patch Line went through, they actually had to buy out city plots. And as a result, instead of a smooth right-of-way 110 feet wide, which is standard for the state, you've got kind of a sawtooth profile on the edge of the right-of-way, and in some places, the right-of-way itself is as narrow as 60 feet. That makes it very hard to upgrade. Of course, there are numerous bridges, grade crossings, even the line crossing people's driveways and through their backyards. Because of these characteristics of the right-of-way, the fact that the Transportation Commission has looked at several alternate uses for this line, such as light rail line or bike paths in the right-of-way, it makes it extremely difficult to even consider those as an option. Finally, if you remember the maps, this is a strategic line. In the past, there used to be as many as five different railroads and five lines crossing the west metro. Now, there's only one, the Dan Patch Line, that is still active and carrying freight. All the rest have been ripped up and abandoned. In fact, one of those lines is the future route for the Southwest LRT. But because CP considers this an important line and important connection between north and south, and because they are a Class 1 railroad protected by the Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution and able to condemn and use eminent domain to pick up property, they are an entity that cannot, in turn, be condemned by the city or the line without their agreement to abandon the line, is not available to the city for any alternate use without their full agreement. Just to wrap up what we talked about, Transportation Commission, what's important here for citizens to know in the council, is that given current situations, freight markets, the fact that a lot of the freight that normally went to Savage, especially corn exports via barge, they don't exist anymore. Most of the corn is going to ethanol plants in Minnesota. What corn is left is going by shuttle trains, long-distance across the Great Plains to U.S. users, and it's bypassing this particular line. The potential for future rail traffic increase for freight rail is extremely low over the next 10 to 20 years. Of course, it still has strategic importance to Canadian Pacific, and in talking with them, they have no inclination to abandon this line, and its reuse is very unlikely for the characteristics that I stated. Finally, the St. Louis Park Interchange, if that were to be the selected route to move freight from TCNW into Minneapolis as opposed to Kennelworth Corridor, and that decision, I emphasize, has not been made yet because of the early stages that we're at with the EAW for the MNNS line, and the fact that we still have to do a detailed study of costs and environmental impacts on the Kennelworth Corridor, that if this were to be built, it would still only divert traffic north of BNSF, a mile and a half north, and would not divert any traffic southbound through Edina toward the river. Again, the probabilities of that are extremely low, almost nil, but the availability for alternate uses is also low. So with that, we'll leave it open for questions.
Questions? Thanks, Dave. Member Bennett?
Yes, Mr. Christensen, I did watch your entire hour-and-a-half presentation to the ETC earlier.
ETC earlier today.
Wow.
And I found it, it took me a lot longer than an hour and a half to watch it, because I was taking copious notes, and I found it very informative and very, very complete. And I'm hearing some things this evening that don't fit exactly with what I heard said in January. One of the most significant things is you just said that the potential for rail increase is extremely low in the next 20 years, but when you spoke to the ETC in January, and you were highlighting future trends, you stated that up until 2, that in 2007, freight rail had the biggest single year in its 170-year history, and that the recession broke the change, the chain. We saw 15% drop in traffic. However, container traffic was up in 2010, a full recovery was predicted by 2012, and that after that, 1.5% to 2% growth per year was predicted in overall freight volumes. In other words, a 15% to 25% increase by 2030.
Right, and those numbers are for the state as a whole, on an average. The recession caused freight rail in the state of Minnesota to drop by almost 15%, except for intermodal traffic, which stayed flat. It did not suffer a drop. This last year, coming up to the day in the last 12 months, we've actually seen over a 12% increase in intermodal traffic, and a return of about 10% of overall average freight traffic. Now, most of that is concentrated on the main lines, on Class 1 railroads. This particular line through Edina has essentially not been affected, to positive or negative. We still have the two trains a day, and if we're looking 20 years into the future, even though we have potential for passenger rail and potential for more freight traffic, the actuality is that this particular line probably won't see any significant change, unless the Bloomington shippers change, or there's something happening in Port of Savage.
Again, to the ETC, you made a really good distinction between passenger rail, which is, has a significant public funding component, correct?
Correct.
And freight rail, which is a private operation.
Totally private, yes.
Okay, but what we are talking about, what you spoke about to the ETC, and we're talking about with that St. Louis Park interchange, is we're actually talking about some potential public involvement, correct?
We are. We're looking at significant investment there. We've quoted several figures, but that final cost estimate is still at least a month away from pricing that project with initial cost estimates. But because of the fact that the freight railroads, on their own, could not finance this project out of their existing freight traffic, it's simply impossible from a financial standpoint. In order to clear the way for Southwest LRT and to keep the rail network for the state intact, particularly for these communities to the west of us, out across the western Minnesota and into the Great Plains, it would be contingent on us to approach this as at least a partially public, if not a fully public, investment to obtain those benefits.
So you described to the ETC two, three possible options, given the approval that's been made so far of the Southwest LRT. Can you tell us what those three options are, and what the approximate costs of them would be as known today?
Well, the approximate cost would be really a very rough range. We've had range estimates to stay in the Kennelworth Corridor, but to move the freight rail aside so we would have enough right-of-way to put in the two LRT tracks, of anywhere from $40 to $110 million. That was a number that was quoted from the TKDA study, that was the alternative analysis about three years ago. The state rail plan quoted a figure of about $70 million for this interchange from TCNW onto the Dan Patch Line and north of the BNSF. Again, this is a very high-level estimate, did not do any actual engineering on the estimate, but only took the best guesstimate of some rail experts that we had attached to the state rail plan. So it's very uncertain yet as to what the best decision is, and like I said, no decision has been made because of that.
And what was the third option that you named?
The third option that I named in the Transportation Commission was looking at the old Union Pacific line that roughly paralleled 169. That would be well above $100 million to relay that line. It's totally abandoned right now, and there are some residences built over the top of that roadway, which would have to be bought out and moved. So it is a third option, but probably the worst of the three that were being considered.
Does the 70 million that you identified as a tentative cost for the St. Louis Park interchange, does that include any of the mitigations that you described as likely to the ETC?
Yes. Within the range, and we quoted that as being plus or minus 25%, mitigation efforts to improve the safety along that line, and noise and vibration effects, would probably be included in that figure.
You also did mention, in both of your presentations, the right that freight rail has. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yes. The freight railroads have the constitutional right, under the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, you've heard a lot about that lately in a lot of different areas, that because, at the time they were built, they were essentially the primary way to move anything long-distance, passengers and freight. As such, and because they cross state borders, most of the railroads today operate in at least 20 to 30 states, Class 1 railroads. That makes them regulated solely by the federal government, the Federal Railroad Administration and Service of Transportation Board. That has been the case since the 1890s. Because of that federal impact, and interstate commerce that they are responsible for, they are protected from actions by local jurisdictions and states to a certain extent, and they are considered federally protected as far as their connections go. So in other words, somebody can't just go out and declare eminent domain and take over a rail line and cut it in half. They would be facing federal action in a federal court as a result.
And sure, and even beyond that, if I would interpret it in lay terms, the railroad, the freight rail, has the right to be there, and it has the right to expand its operations, basically without process at a local level.
Exactly. They are essentially the only part of the transportation infrastructure in the U.S. that's privately owned, entirely privately owned, and they are private corporations with their own corporate rights. So they can change their level of business, how they run the trains, what condition their tracks are in, and what contracts they sign for moving freight, or even passenger traffic for that matter, at their will, like any other private corporation. So they are, in that regard, beyond the venue of, oh, we can control a MINDOT or at a local jurisdictional level.
In fact, I think the words you used to the ETC was, you said it could happen with a stroke of a pen, or could change at any moment.
Correct.
Does a railroad, conversely, have a right to take private property by eminent domain?
They do.
And what, if any, limitations exist on that power?
They cannot take private public lands from another jurisdiction that has also the right of eminent domain. For instance, parklands, or city property, or state property, they would have to go to a negotiated settlement and do, you know, without due process. They couldn't just condemn it. And that is covered by state law. State of Minnesota statutes declare that any unit that has the power of condemnation cannot exercise that power against another unit. That generally covers all jurisdictions, but in this case, it also works with freight railroads.
So, Mr. Christensen, with that power on the part of the railroads, where are the nexus points for local residents? And I guess it's whether there are decisions made with respect to governmental funding, public funding?
It is. If public funding enters into it, then we enter into a full environmental process, public outreach, everything that we have set up in protocol and procedure that is necessary to be followed. If the freight railroad wishes to leave their right-of-way, acquire new land, then they have to go through the same process, environmental impact statements and arrest, because they are acquiring new property that isn't covered by their existing rights.
So whatever the prospects are for the seeking of public funding for the bridge at Savage and the like, there is one process underway right now where public funding is being sought, and that's the movement of the interchange.
Correct.
The new interchange in St. Louis Park.
Yeah.
Who are the identified decision-makers for that?
We do not have an identified decision-maker at this stage, because it's an Environmental Assessment Worksheet, which is simply fact-finding. That will be finished on behalf of, for Hennepin County, by the consultants, on their behalf, and then forwarded to MINDOT for environmental sign-off and review. After that is done, any decision as to how to move the freight, and, of course, to acquire funding and arrest, which is still an open question, would have to go to all the parties that are involved. And you've got any number of parties that can veto this. The three railroads involved, the Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, the Canadian Pacific, and TCNW, have to all agree to it. Hennepin County, MINDOT, the Metropolitan Council, the city's involved, and so there are a lot of players who will have to be involved and at the table when we finally make that decision.
What is the approximate timeline for decision?
Well, moving backwards from a possible startup construction of Southwest LRT in 2016, two years after Central Corridor is expected to be finished, we would have a decision point for final location of the freight line, and a decision on where that should end sometime in 2012.
Okay. One last question, and that is, to the ETC, and I'm sorry if I'm asking you to repeat something you've already stated.
No problem.
Tonight, but you emphasized the strategic importance of the Dan Patch Line, the so-called Dan Patch, the CP line that runs through the city, by explaining that it is really the only north-south route.
Correct. On the west metro. Right now, with Canadian Pacific, and they don't run trains through on that line right now, mainly because of the condition of the bridge, but their alternative that they're using right now is coming up from Northfield, on the Union Pacific, through St. Paul, across to Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, and into their Shoreum Yards. That requires them to traverse an extra 15 miles of track and pay baggage rights and fees, so as all the railroads. So they do have a vested interest to keep that line open and consider for future traffic.
Thank you very much.
Member Grindel.
I have a couple of things. Thank you for your presentation. There is, I'm sure, no surprise to you, a little chatter out there, and a few questions. One of the questions that has been raised, and of great concern to neighbors whose homes are close to this line, is that the trains will be, number of trains per day would be increased, and that they would be going 65 miles an hour. And so I'd like to kind of quiet those fears a little bit.
Yes.
Because I think you've presented some information tonight that indicates that that rail is not going to tolerate that speed, and may not even tolerate that many trains. So if you'd speak to that a little bit, so residents get an understanding of that.
Yes. The numbers I quoted in the ETC were that passenger trains running north from Savage into Minneapolis might hit a top speed of 60 mile, 65 miles per hour, on some segments of line where they could, you know, have time to accelerate and reach that speed. Because of the curvature of the line in various places, like for instance, right north of the interchange in St. Louis Park, as proposed, you have curves that could not support a speed of more than 25 or 30 miles per hour, even in a completely upgraded condition. And you have other parts of the line, various jogs and bridge crossings, that would also have to go at slower speeds. Also, if you had that volume of trains, you would have to add passing sightings along the way, improve signalization, and probably most important of all, every grade crossing along this line, in order to minimize impacts with traffic and the local environment, both for noise and vibration and for safety, would have to be fully signaledized, that is, bells, whistles, gates, some grade separations, more than likely, pedestrian overpasses, pedestrian crossing guards, fencing, things of this sort, to, again, to upgrade the line. So there would be a lot of mitigation required in order to make this happen. That said, because of the cost of passenger rail, and we have an estimated cost of the Mankato to Twin Cities line, that line could go to St. Paul as easily as it could go to Minneapolis, in fact, easier. The rail line to St. Paul is very high-grade and relatively straight. We were looking at a project cost of somewhere in the range of $400 to $600 million, public funds, which we obviously don't have right now. And the choice of where to go with the trains as far as the final term is, would be up in the air, and of course, influenced by that. And as we said, on the freight side of the picture, which is out of our control, because it's all private venture, private business, again, unless the world market changes for exported grain, and we start producing a lot more grain in this country, and do away with the need for ethanol as a motor fuel additive, quite a few things. That the current trends of reduction in barge traffic, roughly about 30% a year for the last three or four years out of the Port of Savage, and any train traffic hauling grain from western Minnesota along this line and down through Edina to that river crossing, you know, we don't see any change in those markets happening anytime soon.
Thank you.
One other thing, Dave, just to clarify this a little bit. The state rail plan that you described in one of your early slides, estimates, as I recall, four to eight passenger trains per day, running in the high-speed intercity passenger rail.
Correct.
On an intercity passenger rail basis. What I hear you saying now is, if that is a volume that is eventually realized, it would be more logical and more probable that it would run from Mankato to St. Paul than it would run up to Dan Patch Line with all the improvements that would have to be made.
That would be the easiest to build and the easiest to run at high speeds. And of course, high speed is what the passenger rail program for the coming few years is all about. If you think about high-speed passenger rail, in the state rail plan, regionally and nationwide, you have a gap between what can be done on freeways right now, at 65 or 75 miles per hour, depending on how fast you travel yourself, nonstop from point to point, and the next logical intercity alternative is air travel, 400 to 600 miles per hour, but to very long-distance points, and not a lot of short hops anymore on the regional level. High-speed passenger rail, as it's now used in Europe, and Japan, and in China, is something that fills that gap. True high speed is running at 200 miles per hour. That would put us between Twin Cities and Chicago in a two-to-three-hour window, travel time, as opposed to the eight hours it takes to go via Amtrak today, and six and a half hours to drive it, or three to four hours to fly it, when you count in terminal time and pat-downs and everything else. So it's a new mode of transportation, literally, but it's going to take an entirely new outlook, new view, and a very heavy infrastructure investment, similar to the interstate program.
What were the timeframe estimates under the state rail plan for this as a possibility? That is, the four to eight trains per day from Mankato to the Twin Cities?
This would be at the very end of the recommended window, probably around 2030 or beyond.
Okay, all right. Other questions for Mr. Christensen? Members Craig?
Mr. Christensen, I'm trying to understand the drivers of future capacity on this rail line, because that's what's of interest to residents, of course, the risk of increased capacity. And what I hear you saying is that there's, one is, demand would have to shift dramatically.
Dramatically, yes.
Dramatically. Although grain demand, given the food shortage in the world, is a possibility, and ethanol reduction is too, but it would still have to shift dramatically. And then the second thing that would have to happen is, a major piece of infrastructure, i.e. the Savage Bridge, would have to be reconstructed to take additional capacity.
Correct.
Created by the demand. Is the TCNW exchange in St. Louis Park, is that another factor that would allow for additional capacity, or does that not really, is that not a determining factor? additional capacity or does that not really, is that not a determining factor?
That really is not a determining factor. That traffic today moves off of TCNW into Minneapolis and then onto St. Paul for interchange with the four class one railroads. And the traffic that they generate from those interchanges back to the communities along TCNW travels that same route. If the MNNS interchange in St. Louis Park were selected as a way to divert freight traffic, it would still be directed basically eastbound towards St. Paul and not south to the river.
So if they went from two trains a day to six trains a day because of demand, they could still go down the Kennelworth Corridor if that, okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there really is no adverse effect on potentially increasing capacity and therefore increasing the risk of more trains within the Edina community?
Correct.
With regards to light rail, I understand that light rail is not planned for this corridor, but given the infrastructure that's there, would there have to be significant improvements for that to happen? In other words, if the Savage Bridge was not changed, could light rail travel through that corridor if it became part of a future planning process?
If light rail were to travel through that corridor today, it would have to be at the full cooperation of the CP in order to use light rail vehicles like we're currently using on Hiawatha or diesel powered units like are proposed in other parts of the country and in use, for instance, in San Diego and Ottawa. There would have to be a complete 100% separation of passenger traffic, freight traffic. In other words, you'd have to keep the freight traffic with the CP's approval at some hours during the night and leave the rest of the railroad open during the day and completely block from any freight interchange so you could run light rail vehicles over it. That said, the condition of the line would still have to be improved dramatically. You wouldn't want a light rail vehicle traveling at 10 miles per hour, nobody'd ride it. And across the bridge, even slower and danger and safety in doing so without improvements. Also, if you're running multiple light rail vehicles to connect with Southwest LRT, you'd have to install passing sightings and station stops, other amenities that would have to probably require taking of some additional property along the right of way.
So is this, in terms of light rail, would this be one of the most functionally obsolete corridors as it exists today?
As it exists today, yes.
So therefore requiring the most public dollars to make happen?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions?
Go ahead, I've got one too that popped up. Member Bennett?
Bearing on one of the questions that was just asked, there were three statements that were made to the ETC and understanding that conditions are fluid, but to the ETC, you explained that a new elevated interchange in St. Louis Park would enable nonstop traffic, meaning not having to slow down, link of the TCNW to the CP and BNSF, Burlington Northern Santa Fe, north and southbound to Minneapolis and Savage Northfield, understanding again that we've got the bridge issue at Savage. You also stated that the interchange would possibly start to generate more traffic on this Edina line. And finally, in summing up before you opened for questions, you stated, very hard to predict, keep eyes on St. Louis Park. If Hennepin County met council in MINDOT to build the Southwest LRT, decide that the most cost-effective and efficient way to move freight traffic is through St. Louis Park on the Dan Patch Line, there will be a lot of changes up there. And I'm not trying to be alarmist, I'm just trying to make, at all, I am just trying to make sure that people understand that, for instance, freight rail has this federal right to operate and there is no chance to comment, limit, or as a local entity steer or guide that in any way. So there are very few points where the public has any opportunity to comment upon or influence freight rail planning or operations at all. And it would appear that with the seeking of public funding for the building of an interchange, that we are in fact at one of those points right now, bearing in mind the conditional statements and the other factors that we'd need to change for some types of expanded use. But I just think it's really important for people to understand that.
Yeah, it is. And I'd like to point out that the EAW process we're undertaking in St. Louis Park right now is one of those nexus, one of those places where the public can comment on what is happening because it is a publicly funded project and conceptually at least. Since I made the presentation on January 20th, we've had revised engineering drawings that have reduced the footprint of the overpass and completely eliminated the southern connection into Edina between the TCNW and the Dan Patch Line. In talking with railroads and looking at traffic projections and everything else, there just didn't seem to be a need to spend, you know, tens of millions of dollars on that connection when there already was a ground grade level connection in use, you know, admittedly limited, but already in existence that could handle that southern move. And we saw no need for full train traffic and nonstop traffic to be routed south into Edina to Savage. So the only connection that exists on that plan right now is a northern flyover. That said, the project management team and the environmental assessment process that we're undergoing right now and the open houses that we have had and that we still will have, there should be another open house in April and another project management team after that to review final comments and mitigation outcomes of the plan for this worksheet, this fact finding, soon in the spring. And that'll be a chance for anybody who has interest to comment on it. Aside from people who would rather not have freight trains in their backyard at all, you know, we've had a lot of good comments. There are some people that would disagree with my statement there, but we have looked at very significant mitigation that could apply to Edina in the future too if there was a need for it, in St. Louis Park. Putting up adequate fencing to keep from trespassing on the right of way, especially at St. Louis Park High School which is adjacent to this line. In fact, it straddles it, the football field's on one side of the tracks and the rest of the campus is on the other. We're looking at possible mitigation in the form of pedestrian overpass at that site so students can connect the campus without having to cross the tracks at grade, at the grade crossings. Full quiet zone mitigation, which means quad gates at all the crossings, pedestrian gates, the trains will no longer blow their horns, which takes care of 90% of the noise impact, no matter what traffic level you have, and reduces the impact on the school, on businesses, on classes, on residents, and results by federal law in a safer corridor along there. All these mitigations are being considered right now and with the open house and the public input that we're getting on those, we will, you know, when the EAW is issued, it will have a full menu of mitigation solutions for identified impacts.
And I understand also from your comments to the ETC in answer to a question by Commissioner Bonneville, that a train is prevented by state law from blocking a grade crossing for more than 10 minutes?
That's correct.
Where do people, where can residents find more information and learn more about the opportunity to comment or send their comments?
Yep. There is a project site and I can't quote that right now, I believe it's mnsrail.org, but there is a project site for St. Louis Park. If you go to the St. Louis City site, it has a link to it as well. And people can see what the plans are, comment lists, everything's been presented so far to the public and to the project management team. And also as things go on, there's a chance there to comment and to ask questions electronically as well as in person if you wish to attend the open houses. Thank you.
One final thing, Dave. One thing I heard from you that was a bit disheartening was the comment you made that it wasn't a route, the Dan Patch Line wasn't a route compatible for non-motorized transportation, no chance of really having a recreational trail or a bikeway adjacent to the line itself. I take it that's because of the variability of the right of way?
That's the main issue. Also the fact that because it is such a narrow right of way in points, the Canadian Pacific would normally in our conversations with them, view it as a safety hazard to have a bike path too close to an operating rail line in any event without proper fencing or enough distance between the two. And that is something that they have to worry about because they are fully liable for anybody who trespasses on their lines, even though it may be breaking the law.
Thank you.
Mayor, the website is mnsrailstudy.org for anyone who's interested.
Good. Thanks, Dave, for coming over.
Thank you.
Great information.
Okay.
So really appreciate it.
Thanks for listening.
All right. Willie Edina is part of a joint powers organization called the 494 Corridor Commission. Cities of Edina, Richfield, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, working on issues related to transportation. One of the subsets of the Corridor Commission is the 494 Commuter Services Operation, which attempts to figure out strategies for getting people out of single occupant vehicles. And I thought the report we got on the activities in 2010 was particularly compelling and I asked Melissa Madison, the executive director, to come and give a presentation to the council regarding the activities of the TMO and how effective they've been in reducing single occupant vehicle moves in our part of the metro. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I wanted to introduce my coworker, Kate Meredith. She works with us, serving the cities of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, Richfield and Edina. So Kate's here and will, in just a few moments, give an update on the successful employer partnerships that we have in Edina. And I'll give a higher level picture of what we're doing across the five cities along the corridor. So, good evening, Mayor Houghlin, council members, Mr. Neal. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update tonight with the work that we've been doing. And we thank you, Mayor, for your many years of service and leadership on the Corridor Commission, as well as thank you, Carrie Teague, for your participation. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Melissa Madison, executive director of the 494 Corridor Commission, as well as the TMO referred to as commuter services. On behalf of the Corridor Commission and our staff, we thank you for your continued partnership and membership in our organization, which allows us to help reduce traffic congestion and improve air quality through investing in our work that ultimately converts drive-alone commuters into an alternative mode and will present highlights. So your city, along with Bloomington, Richfield, Eden Prairie and Minnetoka, were charter members of the Corridor Commission back in 1986. So we provided each of you with a one-page summary of our 2010 work plan and the results that we achieved. And I'll point out just a few key accomplishments. On the left-hand column, you will see the goals and the right-hand column indicates the actual results that were achieved. Our goal was to hold 140 onsite commuter fairs with employers and multi-tenant properties and we held 187 such events. We held 20 onsite how-to-bike-to-work seminars with employers, as well as offering free bicycle tune-up events. We recruited and held commuter challenge events with 110 companies this last spring. And in the fall, we held 89 ride-share-to-work month fairs with employers. We work with 630 companies in our five cities where we have a contact person and a relationship with someone who assists us in promoting carpooling and transit, bicycle commuting, even telework to their employee base. And we are letting them know about the construction project taking place at 494 and 169, giving enhanced information. Additionally, we've given 155 companies a display with the bus schedules that serve their location, along with ride-share and bicycle commuting resources. And over the past year, we gave telework resources to help companies establish telework policies to 111 companies. Perhaps the most exciting numbers are the people who we were able to assist in converting from drive-alone into a carpool or regular transit use or regular bicycle commuting. We helped just under 2,000 people convert from driving-alone into carpooling in 2010. Similarly, we helped over 1,700 people convert from driving-alone into regular transit use. We helped 600 people begin bicycle commuting regularly by giving them a customized bicycle commuting route recommendation, along with a customized bike route map, as well as tips on how to bike in traffic. My two favorite numbers from our annual report are the 4,400 people we were able to directly work with who were driving-alone, who converted into an alternative mode three or more days per week, which resulted in nearly 18 million vehicle miles not traveled as a direct result from our staff outreach. And so that presents the big picture as far as what we've achieved in 2010 and now we'll highlight some of the specific successes we're having in Edina. Each of you should have a pie chart and Kate will display it here, indicating the alternative mode, the people who live and work in your city were interested in. Our staff assisted just over 541 people who work in Edina with a customized alternative transportation resource. We helped another 320 people who live in Edina with the same. 35% of the requests were for customized transit assistance, followed by 31% requesting a customized carpool ride match, followed closely by 24% requesting a customized bicycle commuting route and tips for biking in traffic and 10% requesting van pulling. Lastly, we'd like to highlight some of the employers in Edina that we work with and the commuting programs that we've helped them establish and manage. So I'll turn it over to Kate to give you that update.
Thank you, Melissa.
Kate? Thank you so much. Kate Meredith again with 494 Commuter Services. I'm director of outreach. So there are over 25 companies in Edina that we have a relationship with, that we work with someone to provide our commuting information. Commuter Services is working with the Growing Green Team at International Dairy Queen and they formed that team in 2010. We will participate in their Earth Day Employee Fair this year. IDQ has a display of commute materials in a common area and they send out electronic communications about our resources to all employees there. Next, I'll speak about Centennial Lakes. For several years, Commuter Services has partnered with Northmark, the property manager there, formerly United Properties, to host commuter fairs at all buildings that comprise Centennial Lakes. The fairs take place in the spring and promote the annual commuter challenge and bike-to-work day campaigns. Additional multi-tenant properties that we serve in Edina include Edina Corporate Center, the 6,600, 6,800 France Avenue Buildings, York Place and Edina Executive Plaza. Minneapolis Media Institute enrolled in the College Pass Program in 2010, which allows metro area colleges to provide deeply discounted transit passes to their students. Passes can be used for unlimited rides on all trains and buses in the metro area and the pass is valid for an entire semester. The program has been well received by students at MMI. I will quote Owen Sotory, he's director of admissions. "We at Minneapolis Media Institute have noticed a very real and measurable increase in attendance rates since we started offering the College Pass. It's been an affordable and very effective way to keep our students here and happy." DeVry University also offers the College Pass to their students in Edina and St. Louis Park. Commuter Services staff presents about our resources at all their new student orientations as well. Commuter Services participated in Seagate's Earth Day Event in 2010. We will continue to host fairs there and provide our resources to their employees. We were recently contacted by the 50th and France Business Association because of the growing parking problem in the area. We are working with them to find solutions to the problem by providing programs and resources that encourage carpooling, biking and transit by customers and employees. Commuter Services has a strong partnership with Edina Community Education, which is facilitated by the fact that we are office in the Edina Community Center. Edina Community Ed promotes our resources and special campaigns throughout the building and in their publications. Edina Community Education helped us promote last year's Edina Bike Expo. This free event was open to the public and featured a how-to-bike-to-work class, as well as safety checks on attendees' bikes. We also partnered with Bike Edina Task Force, who had an information table at that event. Next, I will cover Edina companies who are participating in eWorkplace, which is a state-sponsored program to help companies establish a telework pilot. which is a state-sponsored program to help companies establish a telework pilot for their employees. There are four Edina companies participating in eWorkplace: Western National Insurance, MMIC Group, Behavioral Medical Interventions, and Temp Force. After completing a successful telework pilot in 2010, MMIC Group now has a formal telework program that is offered company-wide. Since launching their pilot, MMIC closed one office in Plymouth after moving an entire department to work from home and then downsized their headquarters office to a smaller space, resulting in significant monthly savings for the company. MMIC Group is highlighted in the most recent eWorkplace summary of findings that was sent to the Minnesota Legislature. Commuter Services also participates in eWorkplace. Melissa and I both work from home on a part-time basis, which is wonderful. So these achievements would not be possible without your support and partnership with the city. On behalf of the 494 Corridor Commission and our staff, we thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate. Melissa, questions for either of our representatives, Kate or Melissa? I just think the work you've done, and I personally observed over the past few years, since the two of you got involved, you as executive director and then hiring Kate, have just done tremendous work, not only for our community, but all the members of the Corridor Commission. And to see something like a conversion of 45, almost 4,500 vehicles from single-occupant to carpooling and savings of almost 18 million miles in single-occupant vehicle travel, it's astounding, very good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There will be a transportation component of the work that's being done next. But that's not the major emphasis tonight. We're going to hear from our own Kevin Stotin, vice chair of the Planning Commission, about the next phase of work at the, in the Grandview District. And he will discuss the Grandview Small Area Plan proposed process. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you all again, and thanks for taking the time tonight to have me come before you. I am the vice chair of the Planning Commission and served as the chair of the community advisory team on the Grandview District Guide Process last year. And before you tonight, following up on an appearance before you back in December, when you accepted and approved the Guide Process final report. I do want to mention a couple of other folks who are here as well. Members of the community advisory team who are with us tonight. Kim Montgomery is here, Michael Platteter, Sue Davison, and Andy Brown are all with us as well. And they have been integral parts of the process through last year and continue to be engaged in the process. I also want to mention Mike Fisher, who is the chair of the Planning Commission and was very involved in the Guide Process. And Michael Schroder, who was the leader of the design team, wanted to be here tonight but weren't able to be here. They remain very engaged. And then finally, I want to thank Carrie Teague for all his work. Our city planner has staffed this from the very beginning and continues to work with us as we move forward. When we last met with you, we left off after having the Guide Process final report approved and indicated that we would come back in a couple of months to talk about how we would proceed with the next phase. In the time between then and now, Mike Fisher, Michael Schroder, and I have met with Carrie and talked a little bit about ways that we can put together a process that does justice to the Guide Process that we started with. And Carrie has done some research on other small-area guides, small-area plans that we can draw from. And then finally, last week, we met with members of the community advisory team and design team to kind of check in on a proposed process that we've put together, get their input. And in the wake of that visit, have also made some changes. So what I'd like to do tonight is just do a quick, brief background to remind folks who may not have followed the processes closely, kind of where we came from before we got here today. And then an explanation of the process that we're proposing and asking that you authorize us to proceed with. So to start from a background and history perspective, in 2008, the city of Edina and many other cities throughout the metropolitan area amended their comprehensive plans. And when we amended our comprehensive plan, one of the things we did was we identified several places within the community that we called areas of potential change. And the Grandview District is one of those. And you can see it on the map there, kind of in the upper central portion of the map. In December of 2009, the city council was anticipating an upcoming vacancy at the Public Works Building. The Public Works Building, which is located in the Grandview District, was preparing to move to a new location south of 62 and west of 100. And anticipating that, the council authorized the chair of the Planning Commission and myself as vice chair and others to put together a process to try to formulate a vision and goals for this area in the coming future. The Guide Process that we engaged in took place primarily during about a two-month period in 2010, in April and May of 2010. It was quite a compressed process. There were 10 meetings that took place in 20 days. The people who were involved with it were extraordinarily committed and giving of their time. It was also, it's important to note that it was community-led. There were 18 members of the community advisory team and 10 members of the design team. The community advisory team was made up of members of city commissions. There were five members of city boards and commissions. There was a representative from the Edina School District. There was, there were three members of the business and property ownership community in the Grandview District. And then a full half of the community advisory team was made up of residents who were selected at an initial meeting by the residents and the people who appeared at that meeting. And so it was a very grassroots, community-led process. We were assisted in the process, in addition to staff, by a design team made up of volunteers from our community, 10 individuals who have extensive professional design experience and engaged in this process as volunteers and were also very important parts of the process. In December of 2010, we came to the city council and sought approval of the final Guide Process report. Even though we had engaged in the process in April and May, it took us really the balance of the year to put together a written report. And the council, I think, appropriately asked for a written report that could tie together the things that we had discovered during the process. At the same time, we learned that the Metropolitan Council had awarded the city a grant, which we had applied for last July, to assist in developing a small-area plan. In other words, the next phase of this process. So now we move to the second phase of the process, how to develop and complete a small-area plan. First of all, what is a small-area plan? Well, generally, it is a roadmap for future development of a particular geographic area. And you'll see in our, in our metropolitan area that there are a number of communities that have engaged in small-area plans over the years. Minneapolis has done several. One of the ones we looked at was the uptown area of Minneapolis has gone through a small-area plan. Apple Valley, Bloomington, there's a number of different communities that have conducted small-area plans. Typically, such a plan will include a variety of elements, including an introduction and executive summary, background and existing conditions, vision and goals, opportunities and challenges, a development framework, and then implementation, how do you actually implement it? When we think about a small-area plan here in Edina, one of the things we think about is, well, how do we convert what we have done to date in the Guide Process into a small-area plan? Well, some of the good news is that some of the components of the plan have already been created. The vision and goals portion that you typically see in a small-area plan is really the seven guiding principles that we developed during the Guide Process. So that part is really complete. In addition, the background and existing conditions, we did a considerable amount of work during the Guide Process on that. And the final report from that Guide Process includes some detail on that. And that should be pretty easy to convert to a small-area plan. Finally, the challenges and opportunities portion also is something that there's substantial initial work that's been completed on. So when we look ahead to the small-area plan process, or this second phase of the process, the primary focus is going to be on what's called the development framework and implementation. And these are really fleshing out the details that go with those seven guiding principles. How do we figure out what that means on a, on a kind of block-by-block level? What does it mean for land use? What does it mean for transportation? What does it mean for infrastructure? So then the question is, what's the right process for our community? We didn't want to just take the process that any other community has used. We wanted to really tailor a process that's right for Edina. And when we think about that process and we think about the process we went through in the Guide Process, we have really three goals. First, to develop a process that is community-led and reaches out to all stakeholders. Second, to ensure that the result is consistent with the seven guiding principles that we adopted in the, in the Guide Process last year. And then finally, to be responsible stewards of the public resources that are being used to support the process. So how do we implement those goals as we try and develop a process? Well, our first kind of concept is to organize first and engage consultants later. When we first talked about how we would proceed with the second phase, one option was to say, well, we've got a grant from the Metropolitan Council. What we could do is just go out, hire a consultant, and have the consultant design a process and tell us where we're headed. We really felt like, after our process last year, that we didn't need to have a consultant tell us how to design a process, that we've gotten pretty good at that. And that what we ought to do instead is to ensure that the process is community-led, that we go through a similar process to what we went through last year, an outreach process to make sure we get local stakeholders to participate, whether those be residents, city and school district officials, and business and property owners. And then secondly, to focus our resources. Instead of going out and having, you know, spending some of this hard-sought financial support to, in essence, hire a consultant to tell us the process that I think we can figure out on our own, that we act as our own general counsel, if you will, or general contractor, if you will. And that we use the consultants down the road where expertise and horsepower are needed. So the first concept is organize first, engage consultants later. And you'll see when we look at the process that we're really talking about a first stage of the process that is exactly that, trying to organize and think really hard about how do we, how do we bring consultants in in the most effective way later. The second concept is how do we strike the proper balance between deliberation and cooperation? Or, I'm sorry, completion. One of the, one of the things that we really are very aware of is that we want to take the time that's necessary to do this right, to make sure we're thinking through all the angles, make sure we're thinking about what we want the future of this area to be. But we're also aware of the fact that we can't take forever or the process ends up making the finished product not very usable. So what we've settled on as a compromise is a one-year process that goes through four three-month stages. The first stage would be an organizing and framing the work plan stage that would take place from April of this year until June and would really be completed with recommendations to the council on requests for proposals to consultants for work that we would like them to assist us with. The second stage would take place between July and September of this year and would include engaging the consultants with the council's authority. We'd come back to the council after receiving responses to requests for proposals and seek the council's authority to engage certain consultants to help with certain parts of the process. And then to go through that drafting part of the development framework and the implementation really is the heavy lifting that we'll need to do for the plan. The third stage would be public input and refinement, which would take place between October and December of this year. What we're envisioning there is a public meeting that would engage the public generally in what we have come up with as a draft and try to get feedback, discussions with probably the school district and with boards and commissions at the city, and then culminating with a presentation to the council and feedback from the council. And the idea of refinement is that we constantly go back after each of these sessions to try to tweak what it is we've drafted to, to make sure it's lining up with how people feel we ought to be charting a course for the future. And then the final stage would be in January to March of next year, and that would be the drafting stage. Having gone through the Guide Process, and even though we were able to do the bulk of the work in 20 days, I am, I am mindful of the fact that it took a considerably longer period of time than that to do the drafting. And so I wanted to be sure that we left that time to actually complete the final written report that we would present. The final kind of concept to try and implement our goals is, is to ensure participation and productivity. What, one of the things that we, we want to make sure and do is cast the net as broadly as possible. We had great success during the Guide Process in reaching out to folks in the community and having them be part of the development of the seven guiding principles. We recognize that we need to take that circle another layer deep. And we need to engage as many stakeholders, whether they be residents, whether they be business and property owners, whether they be future potential developers, in the process of thinking about what direction this is going to go. And so along the same lines as our kickoff meeting, when we basically welcomed anybody who wanted to participate in the process, I anticipate we'll probably do the same thing again in, in this process. That needs to be balanced against actually having a committee that is a manageable size that can steer a course. And so what we've done is, is kind of set up two different, two different ways of participating in this. One would be work groups, working on various tasks. It might be what should land use be? It might be what transportation or traffic management issues? It might be parking issues? It could be what are the community, what are the needs that are in the area and in the community? Those would be decided by the group. And then, and then the group would make its own decisions about who would populate those work groups. But then those work groups would work with a steering committee that would coordinate and make sure that all of those different threads are going in the right direction. And that steering committee would work probably more directly with the consultants so that we're being very efficient about how to do that. And this graphic just gives you kind of a sense of graphically how to represent that. And I just have four work groups here that are kind of feeding into a steering committee. But it could be more, it could be six work groups. That's going to really depend on what, what the group that decides to engage in this decides are the needs, looking at those seven guiding principles. So this final slide here is the document that you have in your packet, along with memorandum, which is a little small for folks in the audience to be able to see. And that's part of why I wanted to make sure and print it out. It is basically the work plan. It's the schedule and the timing. It follows that one-year framework that I discussed in four different stages. We're mindful that this provides us with a good course for direction, but that the details will, to a certain extent, have to be hammered out as we move along. And what we're here tonight for is to ask your permission to move forward with this process. And if you authorize it, we would hope to try and commence it in mid-April or so and go through a process similar to the one we went through for the Guide Process to reach out to folks and get as many people engaged as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions or take any input.
Very good, nice presentation. Questions for Commissioner Stotin, Member Brindle?
Just a quick comment. I know that there are people in the community who have not yet been engaged in this, who are interested in doing so. So I've had a couple of email conversations with people who have mentioned your name, and they know who you are with their past association with you. So you'll probably hear from, from some... So you'll probably hear from some new people who want to get on board. Very exciting. Looking at the work that was done in 2010, it's just a remarkable piece of work. So being able to move this along and get it closer to reality is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Do you have work groups already proposed?
No. And we had a little bit of discussion at that when we visited with the community advisory team. And I, actually, in a first iteration of the presentation, I had mentioned some examples like land use, or like community needs assessment, or the like. And I think after our conversation, what we decided is we would like to, you know, I think we all who participated in the process probably have some ideas of what those are, but we don't want to fix those until we get into the process. And then we'd like that to come through that process and identify what those areas of inquiry ought to be.
You've mostly answered my second question, which is what will be your process for defining them or naming them? So you'll see what people bring to the meeting. How then will you move from people walking into a meeting and saying, I really think there should be a work group on this topic? How will you arrive at a final list?
It's a great question, and, you know, my answer is partly, I don't know. I mean, we're going to find out. We're going to really have to have, that's part of the delicate balance of this kind of process, where you really want to be genuine with the kind of community-led nature of this and be open to new ideas that you haven't thought about. But I also recognize that it's going to have to be some framework. You can't just roll the ball into the middle of the room and say, what do you think we ought to do? You know, one of the things we did at the beginning of the guide process is we actually had an exercise where we asked people to, right from the get-go, just put up ideas about things that they'd like to see in that area. And I think things like that, or work group exercises, might be the kinds of things that we pursue again to try to give a little bit of structure to pursuing that goal.
Just two or three more questions, and they are, the application that you submitted for the grant had a number of categories, I think about six: transportation analysis and plan, community needs analysis, market analysis, redevelopment phasing plan, public participation plan, which it sounds like you've addressed, and then finally, financial analysis of a redevelopment plan. What reference will you be making back to these categories in the working group formation phase?
Excellent question. It is something that we are going to have to be mindful of. There is a, you know, the grant contract does identify how the money is going to be split up. That is based in large part on the application we made. But we need to stick to that. If we feel like those are out of balance, or we need to make a, we need to tinker with those, I think, you know, we could go back to the Metropolitan Council and suggest that there be some alternatives there. The fact that they divided them into the areas that we included in the application suggests to me that they're following our lead on what we think are the important elements. But certainly, the things that you mentioned there and that are in the grant are pretty critical. I mean, you know, you spent a lot of time talking about transportation tonight. That was a huge part of what we observed, whether it be, you know, even on a more direct level, the dam patch line, which goes right through the Grandview District. Obviously, that's a big piece of it, as well as the automotive and pedestrian and bicycle traffic was, those were huge pieces of what we wrestled with. And I think it's certainly reasonable to believe that we're going to have to have that be a big part of what's happening.
Given that community needs was about a tenth of the money applied for and obtained, how do you plan to, what community needs do you plan to analyze, and how do you plan to do that?
We need to think about both the kind of substance of that question, as well as the means of getting there. So taking the second one first, from a means perspective, there's a lot of different things. You know, you could go as far as doing a survey. You could try and piggyback off of other things. You could take information that we gathered during the guide process and talk about the inventory of things that we have in the area now. And I think we're just going to have to think about how much do we want, how much time and money do we want to spend to do that? And what's the most efficient way to make sure we're getting a sense of what the community needs are and what ought to be included in there? From a substantive perspective, you know, one of the guiding principles talks about the fact that this is really a neighborhood service center. And one of the things that we noticed as we went through the process is how many different things people who live in this area use that district for on a daily basis? And so I think it's important, that will be a helpful guidepost for us as we think about what do we need? Is there something missing that's not there now? Is there something that could be done differently than is not done there?
And then finally, given everything else we've heard tonight about the role, the importance of transportation, the transportation challenges, and particularly the challenge of obtaining funding for transportation projects, where will that analysis of possible and likely funding be in your planning? And will it serve as a guide or a rule-out for some of the things that you might want to propose or consider?
It's a great question. I can't, you know, I think we really have tried to be thinking big, so to speak, you know, not letting practical difficulties get in the way of a vision. As we move to this small area plan, we're going to have to be a little more realistic, if you will, looking at what things are possible, what's the feasibility of certain things. And that may be part of the implementation discussion as well. Maybe it's putting it off further. Maybe it's sequencing it in a different order. Maybe it's figuring out ways that you can raise funds in different creative ways. Maybe it's harnessing private funds that are attracted to public amenities that are the, you know, are the backbone. So it's a great question, and I don't, you know, I think we're going to have to really wrestle with that as we go through.
Other questions for Commissioner Stotan? Member Sprague?
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioner Stotan, first of all, I want to thank you for your time and talent that you've dedicated to this endeavor and your ambassadorship. You led us through some rough patches where we actually reached consensus, and it's an art to be able to navigate this partial framework, partial freestyle environment. And I'm so grateful that we have you back leading the process.
I should say, by the way, that I neglected to mention you, Mr. Sprague, as a member of the community advisory team. So thank you for your service on that as well.
Great experience. So first, a comment about recruitment for this event. I'm hoping that we can do some network-based recruitment to get different corners of the community involved that may not traditionally get involved in things like this. And I don't think that happens through passive, the passive use of our communication facility. I think we have to do some network-based recruitment. And so that's something perhaps that the people orchestrating this can think about, to see some fresh faces come forward to take part in this important event. And the other piece in terms of the process is, I wonder if it wouldn't be beneficial in the early stages of this process, as we did with the original process, to have a tour of, say, three outstanding public-private partnerships, you know, in the metro, where we could actually take the group and tour these important developments. There's something that happens when you see with your own eyes what is possible, and I think it helps people to think outside the box. Certainly, I had that experience as we just toured the existing facilities and the site around the facility as we went through that process. So that's one other suggestion that I had for that. And then in terms of the, Member Bennett was talking about community needs and how do we determine that, we're long overdue for a community-wide survey. And maybe, I don't know what the timing is, Manager Neal, on a potential survey even this year, but it would be perhaps an opportunity for you to piggyback with some questions that might be able to go on that survey that might relate to the work that you're doing on this endeavor. So something to think about, both for you and for Manager Neal.
And if I can just comment on a couple of those points on the survey, I mean, I think that's a great point. If there's a larger, if there's a broader survey that's being done anyway for a variety of purposes, not necessarily just related to this, that would be a great thing to piggyback off of, and I think, again, would stretch the resources even further. And then your networking point, I think, is a terrific one, where, you know, we really worked hard last time to get the word out and to try to figure out as many different ways, you know, not just posting a notice on the most nearby telephone pole that we're having a meeting, but really getting out and figuring out word-of-mouth and other ways with great new technologies to make that happen. I know the communications staff was very helpful last time around in, you know, doing a video that was on the city website and coordinating an article in the local newspaper and a variety of other things. And so we'll pursue those and pursue others. But I agree with you that it's absolutely critical that we continue to broaden the circle and get people engaged.
Good. Well, I know when we authorized the initial process, there was a bit of New Frontier in all of it. And it worked out, it couldn't have worked out better, I don't think. And you folks did a terrific job. And I think you don't have a completely blank canvas here. You've got some guiding principles that some of the folks here in the room helped you put together, and the council put their blessing on. I'm really quite eager to see what comes out of this work now in terms of some recommendations to the council on a small area plan, some real creative visioning, I would expect, because we've already seen an indication of that, just in that short burst of work that you did, where all of you worked so hard over a compressed period of time, came up with some terrific ideas, I think, and linkage between east and west across Highway 100, quite fascinating things. And so I'm eager for this next phase to begin, and I don't see anything in the process that I wouldn't put my blessing on. I know that as you move through this process over a year's period of time, you're very good at securing public comment along the way at the various stages. So in addition to all the members of our citizenry that are voluntarily engaged in one of the teams, you'll also be leaving room for public comment at particular meetings. So I would encourage that continuation of that methodology of process as well. So any other questions, comments? Commissioner, Member Bennett?
Just one follow-up on that community needs idea, and I do appreciate Member Sprague's suggestion of trying to include it in a community survey if one is, if we have the time and needs. And I would very much appreciate if the focus was not only what people envisioned for this area, but possibly a question as to what people feel is missing in the community. I know we had one candidate for, I believe it was the Park Board this year, who had lived in different parts of the country, tell us that as a first-rank suburb, we're going to rise or fall, live or die on infrastructure in our schools. And we know we've got the schools, and it'd be really helpful to know what we need for infrastructure as we go forward.
Terrific.
Other questions, comments? All right, good. Is there a motion to approve the process proposed for the Grandview Small Area Plan?
Second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carry it.
Thanks, Commissioner. And thanks to the CAT Team members who came this evening, obviously have continuing interest, and hope that will continue into the future, take advantage of that knowledge base. Next matter, parking permits for all employees of Edina Businesses. Ms. Bennerott has this particular issue.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and Mayor of the Council. The City of Edina has four parking structures in the 50th and France area. We have a ramp here.
Can you use your microphone?
Yeah. We have a ramp here, a ramp here, a ramp here, and a surface lot here. Those break down in this way. We have 302 spaces in the south ramp, our largest ramp, 274 spaces in that center ramp, 269 spaces in the north ramp, and approximately 37 spaces in that surface lot adjacent to the Five-O Mall. Despite this large number of parking spaces, we do have a growing parking concern in the 50th and France area, seemingly exacerbated by the addition of at least four restaurants in the area in the past year alone. The Association has been working diligently and quickly to address those growing concerns, recently forming a parking task force to work with property owners and merchants in the area to develop recommendations. Association staff is working with 494 commuter services to explore options for employees. Association staff is exploring off-site parking options near the area for employees. And they have one additional recommendation which we're here to address with you tonight. Currently, the rules for parking for employees are that with a permit, employees can park in five-hour spaces designated for permitted parking only. Those areas are the top level of the north ramp, the top level of the south ramp, the lower level of the south ramp, and there is absolutely no employee parking allowed in the center ramp. What Association staff, board members, and even our own police department personnel have observed, however, is that we have a number of Edina Business employees who are using what we would consider premium parking spaces during the day. Maybe not illegally. A realtor might be parking in a two-hour designated spot and being in and out within two hours. Someone who works part-time might only work four hours, and so they can park in the five-hour parking spot without a permit. However, with the shortage of parking for our customers, we're losing our competitiveness as an economic retail area. So the Association has recommended that all employees of Edina Businesses at 50th and France, regardless of full or part-time employment status, hold a parking permit if they want to park in the parking ramps at 50th and France. They have recommended, the Association staff, that part-time employees pay half-price for an annual permit, $2.50 per month instead of $5.00 per month. City staff is recommending that the parking permits be the same regardless of parking stat, or employment status. We feel it will be difficult to track how many hours an employee works, whether or not they're full or part-time. To give you another point of reference, here we have parking permit revenues for the past three years, topping out almost three years ago now at $29,674. Less than half of the employees who work in 50, at 50th and France on the Edina side are holding permits right now. Tonight, we do have with us the 50th and France Association Executive Director Rachel Hubbard and Board President Diana Fleedom from the optical to stand for any questions you might have of their recommendation.
Questions for Ms. Bennerott? Member Swenson?
How many spaces are in the employee area that's in that lower level of the south ramp?
Wayne is frantically looking for that information for us.
And is that the only employee-only area? Is it 107?
Yeah, we have 107.
And that ramp, you mean?
So if they own a permit, is that the only place they park with their permit?
No, they can park in the top level of the north ramp, the top level of the south ramp, or the lower level of the south ramp. Only the lower level of the south ramp is designated for employee parking only. The north ramp continues to be underutilized with- The north ramp continues to be underutilized with open spaces.
So if you total up the spaces and assume that we're not giving them to anyone who's going to be there for five hours, which if you're going to lunch and splonk and shopping, you want the five-hour space. So, but if you're totaling up where those permit people would park, how many spots is that?
270.
So what happens to the employee if you have over, if you have 1,500 employees and you have 270 spaces and they're all buying the permit? What happens to them if they've bought the permit and they can't find a space?
That's exactly the reason why we want all employees to have permits, is because right now they're parking wherever
Right.
they want to. And so if we have the permit, we can then have the parking enforcement give tickets to people that are parking in the premium parking spaces. Because what's happening now is we're getting multiple complaints of people not finding spaces, and they're saying, well, why don't I just go somewhere else and do my shopping or, you know?
And I've gotten those complaints. So I, if you're getting them
Yeah.
And I, I'm surprised I get them, because I would assume they would normally come to you. No, but my concern is, it's great, I love the idea of the employees not parking in the premium spaces, but if you only have 270 permit spots and you have 1,500 employees, granted, they're all not coming, but let's just pick, half of them are coming at one work shift. You have 750 employees with 270 spaces.
Right.
You still really haven't solved your parking issue.
That's true, and that's part of the reason why the Parking Task Force Committee is getting together, because we do have to have, in addition to this, we have to have other alternatives. So working with, you know, churches or a shuttle service, or, you know, the commuter programs that, you know, the park and rides, that kind of thing. I mean, we obviously need more than just this is a solution.
Right. And then my other question, though, I know we don't own it, and it's a private building, and it's in Minneapolis, but the lower level of Anthropology, I've heard, is relatively empty.
It is.
Is there any way we could arrange some sort of employee parking over there if that's where the $5.00 went to that building, for instance?
Yeah, I know
And we didn't monitor it?
The owner of that building has been approached before, but that is definitely on the agenda again to approach him, because I did find out that the employee, they have a surface lot that has 40 spaces, and then the underground holds 45 for their customers, and then there's an additional space of that parking lot underground that holds 55 spaces for their second-level tenants only. So it would be something that we would definitely, you know, talk to that property owner about.
While they are exploring that option, the owners of Pinehurst Properties, as I understand, already make arrangements for their tenant employee parking off-site. So I think it's unlikely that if they've made arrangements themselves for off-site, they would give us some of their parking for our employee parking.
I think it's more likely that they would be a good location for valet parking.
Well, that was my next question, was valet parking over there maybe instead of in employee parking.
They needs to look at the option of off-site.
Now, the building on the corner of 50th and France sold, it was in the paper this week, 5001, which I think is the, what I think is the Ann Taylor Loft building. And there's kind of some rumor swirling of a restaurant there.
I've heard that, too.
So I don't think it's going to get better, to be honest.
No.
I think we're going to have more and more pressure on us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so we, yeah, we're, you know, the Parking Task Force Committee is really looking at, you know, short-term solutions, this would be one of them, and then long-term solutions, as working with the City of Minneapolis to help with the parking situation.
Another long-term solution that Director of Public Works Wayne Hul is working toward is additional infrastructure. He's been working closely with the property owners in the area to propose some improvements to the ramps, but it's a little premature, and we can't yet count on that.
Sure.
Member Wendell.
A question about the valet. How is it going? Are people using it? And where are they parking the cars?
Valet, you know, is helping, but it's not the total solution. They are parking those cars on the top level of the north ramp, which is an employee permit-only section. So, but like I said, because of the growing issue, we are looking with that company, the valet company, to do some off-site alternatives.
All right. And then with regard to how employees get these permits, do they come to City Hall to get them?
We're here at City Hall.
And we have an officer who is at 50th and France, kind of monitoring how people are obeying their parking restrictions. Would he be a reasonable person to make those permits available at the, at the business so that it's more convenient for people to buy them there?
We might be able to explore such an option, though we do have to prove up employment status on the Edina side, and then if they have two vehicles, they get a second sticker for free, and our police department does need to verify ownership of that second vehicle so you and I aren't sharing one permitted application.
Well, and that, that is the problem, because the tougher that we are on our employees and when we accidentally ticket one of our customers, which we ticket anyway if they're there too long, but they get really ticked, and that's usually the other call I get, is when they've gotten, they've tried to do those three things, the lunch, the splonk, and the shopping, and that isn't helping making them want to come back to 50th either.
Member Sprague.
I just want to get a clarification on capacity in the district, because our sheet here says 1,002 spaces in the three municipal parking ramps. But I just added the three lots that you gave me, and that was 845, so.
You're correct, Councilmember Sprague, that the staff report included figures provided to me by Ms. Hubbard. These numbers in the PowerPoint I presented tonight come from the City of Edina and our parking permit application. The numbers on your PowerPoint tonight are the more accurate numbers.
So 845 in the three municipal parking ramps and 37 in the surface lot of the Edina Five-Oh.
Correct. And tonight, in my presentation, I did not reference the Ewing Lot, which is on the City of Minneapolis's side, and is
And is that lot used?
Yes.
So when you go over there, is it usually pretty full? I haven't parked there recently
Yeah.
to know. Okay.
Is that the one behind the collective?
Behind, it's on Ewing Avenue.
Behind General Sports.
Yeah, that's the one I mean.
Yeah, that is a full lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Member Bennet.
It occurs to me in reading the staff report and listening to the conversation and the one that we had earlier this year about the valet parking, that what we're talking about is a public-private partnership, where a public resource, the ramps are publicly owned, and the enforcement of parking regulations is a public, publicly funded activity, is partnering with businesses that we really value, but the parking is chiefly for the benefit of those businesses and the professionals who also work in the area. To me, enforcement activities like ticketing cars on the street when the no parking after four o'clock, on the, I guess it's East Side, so that's Minneapolis, it's ticketing, but in any event, when it's on the street and the streets need to be cleared for commuting traffic, then you've got public enforcement for public benefit. When you have metered parking and you're enforcing those meters, then you have the money from the meters going to the city. So again, you have public enforcement for public benefit. When you have public activities for largely private benefit, then I think it's really important to be transparent, which I think we're all being, and I think it's really important to make sure that the public costs are being met by the private users. And in that vein, I am, my inclination is to go with the recommendation of staff, because they're the people who will be providing the administration and the enforcement. And if it's their recommendation to have the permit fee remain at what it is, then I support that recommendation.
I would concur with Member Bennet. I support the $5.00 level, whether they're a full-time or a part-time employee. I think you're in a perilous situation right now. I've never heard so many complaints. I mean, you're at the Yogi Berra level where nobody goes there anymore, there's too many people. So, you know, how, we looked at this issue a few years ago, and the problem was, how are you going to mandate acquisition of a permit by all the employees who work down there and drive? Is there, is there a new sentiment amongst the employers down there? They're always reluctant about making their employees buy a permit, and they didn't, they didn't enforce where they parked. And frankly, I think your solution is to move off-premise. I think you ought to get together with the Lutheran Church on France and Covenant Church on 50th, buy yourselves a shuttle, and start moving people that way, or let them walk during the day, but make sure that they're safely moved at night. Because you, if you jeopardize your patrons' ability to park down there, it's going to be, it'll, it'll disintegrate in a hurry. And if we get another restaurant at 50th and France on the Minneapolis side, if Pearson's becomes another restaurant, I mean, it's going to be chaos down there.
Pearson's did.
Pearson's did?
Yeah.
It's going to be a restaurant?
Pearson's reopened.
So reopen as a restaurant?
Breakfast and lunch. It's going to be two.
Yeah.
I do want to comment on your shuttle comment. We have looked into that option, and it is thousands of dollars, and then the issue becomes who, who foots that bill. I think that we need to definitely, the good thing that's in our favor is we have some of the, you know, the bigger organizations down there like Parisoli that have, that are on the Parking Task Force Committee, and that they see this affects their business and they want to do something. So, you know, if they're willing to help, you know, cover that cost, I mean, that's, that's obviously a great solution, and we would definitely want to go with that, but ...
But you're giving, you're giving premium parking on the middle ramp, below ground, covered parking to employees instead of to your patrons.
Right.
You know, if I were you, I'd be thinking about moving every employee up on top of all the ramps, and probably not the middle ramp, but the, or the south ramp, but the middle ramp, which I think is underutilized, and the north ramp. In fact, I'd maybe think about moving them all into the north ramp and leave those other two ramps open.
We have thought of that, we have thought of that, actually.
And, but I still don't think that's going to be good enough, because you're, you're going to get noncompliance by your employees down there, and until the employers take a hard line, it's going to be really tough. And if you think you're going to come back here and tell us to build bigger ramps for $25,000 of space, I think that's, you know, then you better start thinking about a shuttle, because that's a fraction of the cost of expanding the size of those parking ramps down there. So I, for one, would favor the practical route first. Explore what you can to push them into that north ramp, look at your off-premise locations, and then sometime, somewhere downstream, we can talk about different ramps if we need to.
Carrie, that church that's just west on 50th that you and I talked about a little bit the other day, that thinks they have too much parking space? Isn't that correct?
That is, that is correct. I, I don't know specifically or haven't, haven't witnessed that, but they are of the belief that their, that their church lot behind the church is, is underutilized.
Which church?
The old Grace Church?
Uh, no, 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 no. It's on 50th.
Covenant?
Is it Covenant?
Covenant Church, yeah.
I think I might go there. It's actually more walkable than, than the old Grace Church that's on the other side of the expensive
Right, 50th and Indianola there, or Juanita, whatever.
I also realize that we're talking a lot about parking and cars, and I don't know, we had a presentation earlier this evening from 494 Commuter Services. Employers might also look at encouraging employees to take transit or bike to work and make sure that there are facilities provided for them, because I think they're, it's, it's sort of like, it's very much like the Uptown area in Minneapolis, great areas, they draw a lot of people, and there just is no way to construct enough parking, would destroy the charm of the area, not to mention the unsupportable public expense. So there just have to be other solutions looked at, and some of them have to be not everybody driving.
Right. And we're working with that commission as well.
Another idea for Tom Loman would be if there are business people in the area that, that like under, you know, covered parking, like on the, on the south ramp, maybe they can strike a deal with Tom to pay for parking over there for some of their key employees underground.
I have a question. Are you finding resistance from the business owners to these parking permits, or do they know about these yet?
Well, this, this is one thing that I wanted to talk about, is we get complaints from business owners, too, that, you know, there's no parking, there's no parking, there's no parking. And so really what it's going to lean down to is, to me, and I think we can all see it by the numbers, the employees are the problem.
Yeah.
So we obviously need to address that. So I don't really foresee that we're going to get, I mean, we're going to get some people, obviously, that are going to complain about it, but I don't see a lot of pushback, quite honestly, because
It's their business.
We're all in the same boat, and we want the customers, everybody is, I think, on the same page as far as the customers, we need the customers to have parking, not the employees.
To further illustrate that point and get to the mayor's question about are the merchants on, on board with this, at the Association Board's last meeting, Jennifer Kent, who represents Edina Properties, reported that lawns had been seeing so, so many employees parking in their surface lot in front of the supermarket, that they had engaged or were engaging their own parking enforcement and were going to tow employees out of their own parking lot. I'm not sure that I've seen any towing going on, but they've at least threatened it now. So I, I think it has risen to that level of concern.
Yeah, we don't want that. I mean, they guess wrong and they tow somebody in there shopping her groceries, and they come out and her car's gone. So we got to get a handle on this, folks. I mean, we want you to be successful down there, but you're, you know, you've been kind of your own worst enemy in a way. You haven't been able to take control of the employee situation.
And I think the situation down there has gotten so bad that the business owners and managers are getting on board, because we're the ones that constantly are hearing the complaints from our customers, and we know if they can't get there, we don't have, you know, money to pay our employees then. So the thing is just to get everybody on board, make it something that's enforceable and cohesive, so we can say, this is the plan, we're working on alternatives, but we're hoping this is going to help in the short term to get us where we need to be.
Another surface lot suggestion is the First Bank Lot during the evening. Would not work during the day, but might be, might be an option during the evening. And perhaps it's not even the shuttle. You mentioned the shuttle as being so expensive, both with the Covenant Church Lot that Member Swenson mentioned, and with this First Bank Lot. It's pretty walkable for people in an evening, somebody who's coming to a movie and dinner, and probably a whole lot less frustrating than trying to take a tour of three parking ramps.
Isn't Good Shepherd only a half a block up from Walgreens?
Yeah.
Isn't that Good Shepherd Lutheran?
Yep, that's
I mean, that, that's a huge parking lot over there.
To Councilmember Bennet's point, Traditions Valet Service is already using the US Bank parking lot at night, so a lot of these options have, have been explored.
Okay, well, you know, and, and I, I think from a practical standpoint, we know from past meetings with the City of Minneapolis, that 50th and France is not their downtown like it is ours, and their willingness to look at doing some kind of ramp work behind General Sports is, we got no chance on that, even if it's a half-down, half-up ramp that would not impede the view of those single-family homes along Ewing over there. I think we, we got no chance. So we got to solve this problem ourselves. Okay.
I'd like to make one more point before, before you go further, since we have this opportunity for, for people to hear this message at home. We do offer free, one-day-only parking permits for patrons in the area who know they will be there for longer than five hours. Those are available through our website, it's print-on-demand, and we continue to encourage the association to share that message with their member businesses so that they let their clients know in advance, so they are not pained with coming out to a parking ticket after a spa service, or getting their taxes prepared, or visiting a health practitioner.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
So, oh.
At the $5.00 level?
Include the $5.00.
For whether they're full-time or part-time?
Yeah. It'll be easier for
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Yeah, good luck. All right, we've got a resolution accepting donations. I have that as next in line here, item 3, aye. Is there a second?
Second.
It's Resolution 2011, there's 36, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie, donations in this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center and the City of Edina. All right, and then next is, we have an appointment to take care of to the Energy and Environment Commission, and that is Keith And that is Keith Kostak with a term ending 2/113. Does somebody want to move it?
Second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie, Member Swenson asked that we put on the agenda a discussion with regard to the US Conference of Mayors Civility Accord that we received here at City Hall back in January.
Your Honor, if we might back up just one second. We have one other board and commission matter, and that is it's not on the agenda, but we've been informed by our city clerk that we have a number issue with the Heritage Preservation Board and that right now we do have a, according to ordinance, have a vacancy. And I think at some point we should have a discussion as to whether we want to simply leave that position unfilled. We did have one applicant interview in the first round in January who listed the HPBS as first choice and has a background on a planning commission in another city. And so that would be one avenue. The leaving the position open would be another avenue. And the third avenue would be asking the commission what it feels it needs for people and if it feels it's filled, going back to eight. But I know that we did lose that planning background when we eliminated the joint commissionership with the planning commission.
Would the sentiment of the council be to put this matter on for our next meeting with our recommendation to appoint this person that did interview with us? Or would you want to reopen it?
No, no, no. We kind of made a goal not to reopen and to go back to our original people that we'd interviewed. So what I would like is to be reminded of who that person is in an email from Mr. Neal tomorrow and put it on the agenda for two weeks from now so that we can all feel that we're talking about the same person and.
Very comfortable with that.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. I don't think that requires any action. I'm just asking you to do that. All right, the US Conference of Mayors Civility Accord. Member Swenson.
I thought that this was an important thing right now for us. It's how we've been running our meetings and trying to be more respectful. So I thought it really kind of let in. The other thing, this is just sort of an odd point, but Human Rights and Relations is working on bullying. And I've always thought that not being respectful in political discourse is not a great example for anyone who is a bully. So, you know, just to take it to a broader plane, I just think that this is a good thing to support for our community and for ourselves. And so I would move that we would become, that we would accept this accord.
That we would adopt a civility accord and become a signatory to it?
Yeah.
Member Swenson, would you, could you read just this part? So we have something for the public to hear. I mean, I think this is important.
Sure, if I start sneezing or coughing, you've got to take over.
Not a problem.
"Through the US Conference of Mayors, we, the mayors of the America's cities, in order to restore civility to our communities and through them to our nation, pledge our commitment to the following principles for civility: Respect the right of all Americans to hold different opinions; Avoid rhetoric intended to humiliate, delegitimize, or question the patriotism of those opinions that are different from ours; Strive to understand differing perspectives; choose words carefully; Speak truthfully without accusation and avoid distortion; Speak out against violence, prejudice, and incivility in all of their forms, whenever and wherever they occur."
I second your motion.
Oh, you want the last part?
Read that last part.
"We further pledge to exhibit and encourage the kinds of personal qualities that are emblematic of a civil society: gratitude, humility, openness, passion for service to others, propriety, kindness, caring, faith, sense of duty, and a commitment to doing what is right."
It's been moved by Member Swenson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sprague, moving seconded that we adopt the US Conference of Mayors Civility Accord. Further discussion?
I would like to see this as really the code of ethics of how we do business. And if this could be put on a plaque so that when people come to City Hall, they know this is the basis for how we operate, I think that would portray the message.
I think that's a fabulous idea. And Manager Neal and I were talking about some kind of statement available to promote civility within the chambers, and that's a wonderful idea.
If I might, Your Honor. Yes, the League of Women Voters Minnesota in their Fall 2009 Newsletter had a one-page set of suggestions for not just the kind of meetings that we had tonight or more the town hall forum or public hearing on a contentious issue kind of meeting. But I thought, as I was cleaning out a file, that they made particularly good sense. And so I asked Manager Neal to make a copy for each of us. And I think as we contemplate in future holding a meeting where there might be a particularly contentious topic or a forum, that we might pull these out and look at them for planning purposes.
All right. I think we've got a commonality of opinion on your suggestion. Member Brindle, we'll work on that, getting something posted up. We still need to vote on the accord. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie. Thank you, Member Swenson, for bringing that up. We're now on the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to come forward and comment on any particular matter? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, Correspondence and Petitions. Manager Neal, anything other than what we have up here on the dais?
There is not.
All right, thank you. Member Bennett.
The correspondence from Mr. Persha, who spoke during public comment. I would like to ask that it be referred to the Park Board. It concerned the naming of public spaces and facilities in the city. And I know that that's an issue that the Park Board has held some sort of preliminary conversation on before. I think there's not a complete overlap, but there is some interconnection with donations and donations policy.
All right, I mean, is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie. Now, back to council comments. Member Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. To some correspondence that came this week, Engineer Cool, there were a couple of questions on the Cornelia School Crossing. One person wrote in about snow, clearing of snow at the intersections. Then there was another inquiry with regard to staff parking, not our staff, the school staff parking on the south side. Do you have any information on those items?
Councilmember Sprague, the lady that commented on the snow earlier in the week, I believe, was taken care of and she actually responded back saying, "Great job," and moving that up to a priority. As far as the parking goes, that actually, we'll refer that to the school district. That's really their issue rather than our issue. So we'll forward that on to the principal of the school to deal with.
And is that intersection, I'm thinking about the 70th Street study again, since we're going to start that soon, does that intersection have any special treatments that's already in the design plan? In terms of, you know, we talked about the bridge crossings and things like that.
It does, it'll have the same crosswalk that we have just east of City Hall here on 50th Street. It's a Duraprint, Durotherm type crosswalk. So it's highly visible, lasts for a long time. Throughout the corridor of 70th Street, we're using that application. The other item is that the signals are going to be upgraded. So instead of having like in-ground loops, they'll have a video detection. And so I've been talking to our traffic consultant or our consultant for that project to see if there's any way that we can tweak the signals, especially when the buses are leaving the school, to kind of give them some priority, a little bit of priority. You can't really put actually EVP or anything like that on the buses, but we know the times of day that they actually are leaving the school. So we can possibly tweak that a little bit in the coming years.
Thank you. That was the other issue was on the school buses. I appreciate that. I encourage everyone out there to read the Historic Bungalows of the Morningside Neighborhood and Multiple Property Study. It's a great read of Edina history. And it's interesting. I read this this week and it brings me back to how integral transportation is to growth and development as we look to this old Como Harriet Line that was in service from 1905 to 1954 and then was discontinued. Now we're right back on mass transit, so go figure. Following up on our Human Rights and Relations Commission joint work session, they're doing some great work on bullying, anti-bullying efforts. And I also had a thought, I know they're doing an event for anti-bullying, but another thought I had for the future is to, I've had some side conversations on this with various people in the community, but was to perhaps discuss promoting or organizing a cultural festival for the city, kind of an international day. Our demographics have changed. We are a more diverse community than ever in the past and it would be great to have a day to celebrate that diversity. And perhaps that's something that the Human Rights and Relations Commission can work on for future events. And then finally, Member Swenson and I attended the Connecting with Kids event. Great event, there were six awards given out. And what hit home to me is just how devoted this community is to not only youth development, but to social responsibility, taking care of the very least of those children among us and making sure that everyone has a chance for a great life and a great education. Thank you.
Member Swenson.
Flood plane. I've gotten some calls of people who live along Minnehaha Creek because of the increase. And is it Jesse who's going to be your contact person with the city for that?
That is correct. We've met with both the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and have gotten some numbers. We're now taking those numbers and trying to put them on our city maps to see what that, how that impacts the residents. So we're hoping by early next week we'll have those out. But Jesse Struve, our utility engineer, is our point person at the city for directing.
I know we don't go out and sandbag, but he was thinking maybe we might be able to have some sand and bags. Have you done anything with that?
We are. We've looked at it from a full emergency operations point of view and how many sandbags we have in stock and how do we fill them, where do we fill them if we do run into issues. So we're looking at that. Well, the next step is to see some more modeling from the watershed districts and see if it does materialize. And then we'll be pulling in all the public safety folks too from all the cities and have a kind of an EOC operations or meeting on that to see how we go about that.
Okay. Do you have a timeline as to when you think the worst of it could potentially be here? Is there a window that we would be looking at?
Councilmember Swenson, and council, as Mother Nature keeps dropping the temp, it's below 15. Last time I checked before I closed my computer, it was 15 degrees and 14 is the high tomorrow. So it's going to slow it down. But at the same time, we're dissipating more snow, so it keeps compiling. And so what they're looking at is end of March, early April as far as some of the hydrographs or the worst of the flooding to occur. But it all depends on when the melt starts.
If we decide to provide sand, sandbags, or potentially a machine that will help fill a sandbag, where will we let, where will we put that information so people can find it?
We'll work with our communications department and do some press releases and get it out to the community. And we'll go to the patch, Edina Sun. I mean, we'll cover it. And then most of the, most of the press has been covering it pretty well. And the big thing that we want to get out to the residents right now is that if you feel that you're at risk or have been flooded in the past, and I'm not really talking about the '87 flood because that was a little bit different. That came all at once, it wasn't a melt. But if you could relate back to if your home was there in '65 or someplace in '65 was the worst after relating this flooding or potential flooding to. But it's flood insurance. There's a 30-day wait period on flood insurance, so now is the time to buy flood insurance. And keep in mind that flood insurance only covers your utilities in your lower levels. It doesn't cover your carpeting, sheet rock, or anything like that. So your furnace, hot water heater, softener, those types of items are only covered with the flood insurance that you're buying. So don't feel that you're buying something to cover your lower level.
Additionally, you should look for sewer backup coverage at this time.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, that takes care of the flood issue. Thank you for talking about Connecting with Kids, it was great. And Nice Ride Support. Are we needing to do anything on the support for that from the Bike Task Force?
We will bring you their letter of support to the March 15th meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
Following up on some question and some comment, and knowing that we're expecting more snow, was there ever a protocol set? Well, first of all, many compliments for the snow removal this winter. What a long winter. But we are probably looking for more snow and we do get still some correspondence. And I think some of, one of the questions is where do people go? So if they do have a concern, if somehow there's been an intersection that is proving difficult or something, where do people call? Especially if it's on the weekend.
If they're, if we have a heavy snowfall and we haven't been out to an intersection that precipitates, the non-emergency police number is the number that they should be calling. And then they will contact our, my staff that's on call or actually are coordinating that snow event.
All right, that was just follow, I was remembering a couple of inquiries that I had had. Huge congratulations to all the high school students and staff directors who participated in the Pops concert the last two weekends. It was fabulous. I went to the performance on Friday night and saw Member Brindle there and it was just a complete joy from start to finish. And then one other piece of correspondence is the follow-up on the correspondence we received from a resident regarding sewer construction. Do we have any? It was February 16th. Minnehaha Woods. And it was a question about two very technical questions.
I believe that we followed up on that with an email from our staff. I'll look for that and forward it on to Manager Neal.
Okay, was this, was the correspondent in a singular category or were there other residents who might be similarly affected and have a similar question?
It might have been similarly affected. We did have an informational meeting that covered the sanitary sewer services and how to improve your service. And we actually brought in some plumbers that were, had done work in the city in the past, invited basically a whole plumber's list into the room. Had a very successful turnout that night. So I think, I think there, you know, the one thing that we discovered during the public hearing was that we felt we didn't educate the residents enough on the sanitary sewer service because there was a lot of questions on that comparable to the country club when we did that. So we actually brought in the plumbers. We did a presentation. We kind of covered how to go about it. And there's actually some residents that are putting together some, hopefully, some group pricing amongst themselves to get some better costs.
And what method is recommended for cleaning in future? A cured-in-place pipe? Is it still a rotor ruder type application that can be used for cleaning?
Keep in mind that if you have a cured-in-place pipe lining, which is basically taking a flexible sock with the resin in it and it expands it, so it becomes a new plastic pipe, that you don't have the joints that you would have on a clay pipe, every foot and a half, 30 feet. So you no longer have to clean up the roots. So as far as a rotor ruder or some type of a cutting blade, I hate to use rotor ruder because that's proprietary name. As a cutting blade that goes down, you never, you will not have that issue in the future.
Well, the change in technology changes the maintenance, in other words.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
Just a couple of things. It is that time of year and Gleason Road over Crostown is terrible. I think the holes are six or eight inches deep and they're just huge cracks in the cement. Can we do something about that?
We, actually John Griffith was here earlier. I hit him up, I didn't want to do it in front of you folks, but I did hit him up before I did a. I did his presentation tonight. That is actually a Mendot segment of roadway, even though it's a county that stops at the north end. We've been chasing Mendot for years on it. They've always said, "No, it's the counties," and counties have said, "No, it's Mendot." I actually got ahold of a right-of-way map of, one of the last times I was wandering around Mendot, got in their right-of-way office, and Mendot actually, according to their right-of-way maps, that's their responsibility. So I, after his presentation, I did send him an email tonight, I'm asking him to give me an update on where they are at, on improving that pavement going over the Crosstown, because keep in mind in June, the Bren Road, Lunedary Bridge is going to be taken down, which is going to add a little bit more traffic to that. So I wanted that improved prior to that taking down of the bridge, so.
Yeah, every time the season changes, all of the patch, patches that were put in there.
The really large ones we have done, the county has done some of the patchwork, but we've, the earlier ones that could swallow small vehicles, we were out there earlier throwing winter mix into those holes, so.
Yeah, and some of that winter mix is there, but some of those holes are created again, just with the freeze thaw.
That's correct.
And the change, yeah, it is bad. Let's see, a couple of things were already brought up. The multicultural idea, Josh, an idea for that would be the parade, the Fourth of July Parade, to possibly hold an event in conjunction with the parade afterward, but that, people are always moving different directions. But a good possibility is to create a couple of parade units that recognize multicultural aspects of our community, and recruit some people to be in the parade. It's a fun time.
On that same topic, it reminds me that, that's one of the topics we forgot to cover last night with the school district, was our broadening diversity and how we can work with them to make those folks that are coming into our town that are relatively new, that don't understand the culture of our country, much less our city, you know, embrace them a little bit and nurture them along, and so put that on our list of shared objectives. We did meet with the school district, the school board last night, talked about things we could work on together, including potential shared services, and we committed ourselves to meeting quarterly through 2011 to look for some ideas that would create more efficiency and probably save some taxpayer money in the process. On a sad note, I wanted to report the death of Mayor Steve Lampy from Brookham Park. You know, I've been working with him for a couple of years on the TAB and on the Gears Advisory Board to the CTIB. He's been a terrific participant, and, you know, for the last six months, he hasn't looked very good, and I finally asked him about, two months ago, how he was feeling, and I got kind of a quiet sort of answer, and then he gets this cancer diagnosis, and he's gone in three weeks. So tough, so keep him in your thoughts for his family. On a brighter note, we will have, as Manager Neil likes to say, a Microsoft logo on one of our buildings here sometime this spring. Learned that yesterday from the architect who's working on the project for them, one-hundred-and-eighty sales folks moving into Centennial Lakes, which will stir a lot of activity out there because it's a sales office, so. And then, there is a, I don't know if this is in everybody's mail or not, but the League of Minnesota Cities is having its Legislative Conference for Cities, Counties, Schools, and Townships, March twenty-fourth, St. Paul, Crown Plaza. I'll leave this with Manager Neil, he can scan it and we can get it sent out to everybody. Couple of topics that were interesting, hearing from state leaders, of course, about proposals to address the state budget deficit and implications for local government, which we have a pretty good handle on, I think we don't have much, there isn't much implication for us. But then, learn more about the three legislative commissions on government redesign, which I didn't know anything about, I didn't know they were working on that, and their efforts to improve service delivery, enhance collaboration, and help all levels of government save money. So if anyone's interested in that, I'll leave this with Manager Neil, and we can get that information out to folks. And that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, your honor. I've got a few things. I'll first start out by telling you that we received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, that our annual financial report has received their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's something that we would expect our financial report to receive, and we did receive that. It's the highest form of recognition that GFOA offers financial reports. There's a process to receive that designation. You submit your financial report, it's reviewed by an impartial group of finance directors from around the country, and if it meets certain standards, you get the recognition, and we did that this year. Question earlier tonight was regarding the Decision Resources Study. We've been examining a sample survey, and it's been kind of routing around city staff and getting some input. We're now ready to get your input on the same survey, but we will have that in your hands before the end of the week, and we expect to have that contract before the council to approve, hopefully, at your March fifteenth meeting. We approved, or excuse me, we have released our payment this week to the Minneapolis-St. Paul Regional Economic Development Partnership, so we are a fully paid member. We have an announcement today, that Seal has announced her retirement.
Oh, wow.
It's going to happen November fifteenth, and so, starting between tomorrow and November fifteenth, we will be picking everything we can out of her brain. And there's a lot to pick. So I wish her the best, and we will, I'll be working on a plan to figure out how we go forward.
Well, you know it'll take three or four people to replace Seal.
I appreciate that offer, and we'll take all three or four of them, yeah. We are working up the, for the April fifth work session, the Enterprise Business, Enterprise Fund Business Plan presentation. We're doing something a little different internally this year in that we're getting that group of managers together to conduct an internal peer review on each other's budgets and each other's business plans, and I think it's exciting, and I think theirs, they may be a little anxious about it right now, but I think when we actually get in the room and start working together, that'll be kind of fun. The golf course, Operations and Maintenance RFP, I met with Todd and John today and reviewed their draft. It looks good. We forwarded it on to the Parks Board for their meeting next week, and hopefully they will approve it, and we will get that out into the market. There is the state grant agreement concerning the rooftop solar applications to this building. There is an actual agreement that the city has to execute, and that will be on, also be coming towards you for the March fifteenth meeting. We have some recognitions by MAD of our officers. We have four officers that have been nominated for MAD's traffic, highest their traffic safety recognition, Traffic Safety Award. Officers Nicole Peasek, Ryan Schultz, Brian Hubbard, and Dave Busalis are all nominated for that award, and we hope they all get it. Legislative update, there's a couple of bills that we're following. Two, one of our legislators from Bloomington, Representative Lincezki, has authored a bill, House File 398, which is directing that all state aid be paid directly to property taxpayers, which is something that the municipal legislative commission has been wanting. It removes the prohibition against local sales taxes. It eliminates the Metro and Iron Range Fiscal Disparities Program, so I don't look for much of a future from that bill, but it's out there. She's also offered, House File 338, that prohibits the creation and establishment of new TIP districts, or the expansion of existing TIP districts. Representative Runbeck has authored and offered the hard property tax freeze that is going to be considered, and that's a hard freeze at 2010 levels of spending. That would be difficult. She has also offered House File 501, which would require arbitrators that are deciding cases involving essential public employees to consider the city and county's financial conditions when making arbitrated compensation awards. That was approved on a partisan split, seven-six in the House GovOps Committee. It now goes to Civil Law Committee in the House. And finally, at least on the legislative side, we are impacted, would be impacted, by the governor's proposed tax plan, where he has suggested that there be a, we're not quite sure yet whether there'd be a special tax, or an additional tax, or a SIR tax on homes of, that are valued at one million dollars or more. And Edina has a few of those. There are nine hundred and seventy-one in the city, and that's the most of any city in the state. So we are doing some calculations on what the impact of that might be to our city, if that means we don't get that value anymore, or if that means that those property taxpayers are going to pay some to us and then more to the state. But what the proposal is essentially, is putting those higher-value homes into the same property tax status that commercial industrial property is in, and seasonal and recreational cabins are in the same class. So it would mean about an additional eighty million dollars to the state in 2012 and thirteen, additional one hundred and eight million dollars in 2014 and fifteen. So it's a fair amount of money, but we are, I am working with Bob Wilson to figure out what that impact might be to our budget. I'm going to attend my first Fourth of July committee meeting next week, yep, so I'm looking forward to that next Wednesday. And finally, congratulations to the Edina High School Girls Hockey Team for a big finish, second-place finish this last weekend, and good luck to the boys. They play Burnsville tomorrow night at Mariucci for the section championship. And that's all I have, thank you.
With regard to the proposed property tax bill, I'm wondering if we should really stay on top of this in case our council decides we want to take some kind of a position, either independently or through our lobbyists at MLC.
Absolutely, and we are working with MLC on that, and that's, the issue is, is that it was suggested and proposed by the governor, but the mechanism for how that would actually happen is not very clear in state law. So we're working, and I think his people are trying to figure out how this might happen too, but we are working with MLC to keep an eye on it, and we want to figure out, again, what its impact is on our budget going forward, but also for those property taxpayers who live in our city, how they might be impacted as well. And we'll share that with you and keep monitoring that as the session goes on.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
That prompt, anything else, many one?
One quick question, Manager Neil, we talked about having a joint work session with the committee chairs at one point. I didn't see it on the schedule, is that upcoming? I know we've kind of busy lately, but. It is upcoming. That's not one that we have nailed down, though, at this moment. We are programmed, I think, to the end of April. I'm sensing that we probably are going to do that one in May. Thank you.
We do have a work session not programmed yet on April eighteenth. I don't know if it's been internally programmed, but it's not programmed on this schedule.
It's not on the, it is not on the schedule yet, for April eighteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, we stand adjourned.